Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance again, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you take roll call, clerk, please?
Sure. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Councilman at large, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Council at large, here.
Councilman Ron Caglioni is absent at the moment. Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Here.
Councilwoman Melly Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Melly Garthwaite, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is absent. Councilman Victor Boris.
Councilman Victor Boris, Eighth District, present.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, Eighth District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
Chairman Peter Masaro is absent. And Acting Chair Mitchell Galagnano.
Acting Chair, Fourth District, Mitch Galagnano is here. Thank you, clerk.
We have a six fifty-five special meeting for a public hearing for redistricting. I will turn it over to Chairwoman Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The time is now six fifty-nine. The Committee on Redistricting is in session. Members present are councilpersons Hosky, Akbarali, Garthwaite, Bruno, and myself, acting as chair. We have before us Communication B from the June seventeen, twenty twenty-two Agenda. Approval of the local redistricting map. Do I have a motion, oh mandated by the ten-year census? Do I have a motion to bring this out?
No, 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 no.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, you're right. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the redistricting map?
Paige Weinstein, twenty five, can you tell us how much, it's kind of hard to get.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Can you give us a heads up as to how much this changed? As this is a council, I mean, this is a back and forth we can discuss? Yes? Or no?
It's not up to me.
No, we don't usually discuss back and forth, but Chairwoman, if you want to give some details.
Right, I'll tell you as much as I can. This map is more accurate than the last one. All districts are within ten percent of each district as far as population. Is there anybody, are you finished? Anything else? Okay, anybody else have anything, a question?
Can you tell us when it goes into effect?
Yes, this goes into effect next year before the election of twenty twenty-three. Right now, the council people are still representing the districts that were, you know, the folks who voted for them. We are still representing you until that time.
So, in twenty twenty-three, there may be a change as far as who represents us in our district? If there's a population change? Could there be a problem with that?
There won't be any problems.
Is there a councilperson that is presently representing a district that will not be in that district?
Okay, good question. All of them are good questions. When we sat down and did this map, we made sure that there weren't two councilpeople in any one district.
Okay, so every.
Except the at-large.
Right, except the, of course, right.
So, the councilperson from District Seven will be, remain in District Seven?
Whoever's running for District Seven, right?
But who's presently, the incumbent. If they want to run again, will they be running in their same district?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Please help me, my, my committee. Is there any other questions?
How did you determine a change as far as the way the districts were? And how did you determine making changes to the districts?
Right, so we just looked up, we looked at the whole number of fifty-five thousand plus in the population, and we just divided it by, you know, yeah, by ten. And we tried to stay as close, yes, you can.
So, we really did try, because you know what? At the state level, there was redistricting of the state reps. So, we really did try to create, so that representation that it would stay that way. But based on the census and the way, as Chairwoman said, in the past, like right now, the numbers in each of the districts are not within ten percent. They are vastly different, like the nine and the ten and the first and the six, you know, there's in the hundreds, like four, five, seven hundred residents difference. So, when you aligned it, it, we tried to make it more, as close as possible. So, the number difference, I think it's even less than ten percent. So, there are changes, but it's supposed to be, that's.
You tried to align the population.
It's based on population, correct. So, if you look at the map, you'll see the numbers for each district. And of course, people can move and be added, but right now, they're that close. They're within ten percent, which is what it has to be by law. So, but the old way, when it was done before, it didn't follow it. It's, the numbers are way off.
Thank you.
Does that answer that question, ma'am? Did you, did that, okay.
Is there any, thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Is there any other questions? Yes?
I'm just going to step out in here, thank you. So, I have like some concerns about it. I pulled up the Agenda today, and the map was not included with it. So, for me, like in, for transparency's sake, I feel that. This might be the first time some people are even seeing the map. So, the map that's here is the, is the current, not the current, but what will be.
Proposed.
If it's, if it's approved.
Right.
Right?
So, the map has been on the website.
Right, but a lot of people aren't that internet savvy, and if the Agenda, I, I feel like it should have been linked to the Agenda. You know, so when they, some people printed out the Agenda, you know, you'd see that they would get the map, you know, with it, so they could kind of see where they are, how it would like affect them, you know what I mean? The second thing is, on people, a lot of times are very confused during election time, because you have state municipal, and there, you know, some, some places have to go to, to two different districts. And just looking at, I'm just going to use the Eighth as an example. Now, with this proposition, the Eighth District goes all the way down York Street. I believe it's a section of Elm. It's very far, and I'm not sure as far as Senate districts. I mean, you may have people having to go to three different places, which will confuse people even more. And so, I'm concerned about that side. I want things to be easier for people to come out and vote. I'm sure you all want that, too. You don't want to make it any difficult. I'm sure you guys have all had people come to you up to polling places. They've already been to two other spots, and at that point, they're throwing their hands in the air, and they're like, "I'm not voting, forget it, this is ridiculous," you know what I mean? And I don't want that anymore, and I'm sure you don't either. So, that's just, you know, one of my concerns about that.
We can speak on that, oh, go ahead. So, let me, so what you're saying is absolutely true. So, what occurred is that we got the state first. The state did theirs and never even brought it to us. So, how did their lines cause that? We, when I tell you the time I spent trying to make sure the least amount of people were impacted, I'm not going to lie and say people are not going to face that, but there was truly nothing we could do, because currently now, the state representative, mostly for the Eighth, I believe is Dorinda. I could be wrong, but when they changed it, it is now, part of it is the one-sixteenth, and now some of it's the one-fifteenth. That was out of our hands.
Yeah, and it was, it was like that before, because from like where I live, like Dorinda's my rep, but my mom lives like on four streets over, and Charlie is her rep.
Right, so we do have some of that. So, some of what you're saying, they, there's, it did occur, but when we aligned it, we looked at that. But when you're trying to stay within that ten percent, so that we can't be sued or sent to court and.
Challenged.
Challenged, we, it had to be the ten percent. And even after we did that, it went in front of the lawyers who came back and gave us advice on, "Okay, you got to kind of change this, too, to bring the numbers even closer."
So, I see the Fifth District, fifty-seven hundred, over fifty-seven hundred people. It's now the, the largest district. And it seems very small, but I also know that you have a lot of apartments and stuff. So, a lot of condensed, probably more condensed housing than other, other areas. So, you, it being your, it's your district, right, Robin?
It's mine.
So, that, that might concern me, like, are you going to be able to keep up, you know, with so, with so many?
I lost a lot. I lost some dear places, and I'm going to just.
Put it out there, because I keep crying about it. I lost Preet. In trying to juggle, you know, and make our numbers as close as I can, there were some places that people had to give up to, and there had to be a largest one. And there has to be a smallest one.
It's still the same looking at the map.
Well, you should, did you see it last time? I was all over the place. All over the world.
Yes.
So, now it's a little bit tighter.
Right.
But we did lose places.
Would it be a possibility to have centralized voting polling places?
What do you mean by centralized? Tell me what you mean.
So, people wouldn't have to kind of go to two or three different locations on voting? Like you have, instead, you have these, these districts all voting at, in this area, and these voting in this other one.
So, that's not up to the.
To the council. We have nothing to do with polling places at all. That is the voter of registrars, and we try to work very closely with them. And it's, it's not in our district. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe that's something that everybody could try to work on together, and then we wouldn't have people throwing their hands up in the air.
We, yeah, we try.
We truly, and, and be honest, it is to support what the Chairwoman is saying. We have worked quite diligently and continuously speaking with the Registrar's office. They are the deciders of where people go to vote. There is no, you know, in the First District, we used to, you know, we used to be here at City Hall, and then we went to the Elks, and now we're at the church. We have no say in it. We can ask, you know, the Chairwoman tried to get them to change the Fifth District voting location to Kerrigan, and she was told absolutely not. The Fifth District at one point was voting in the Fourth District, and the Fourth District was voting in the Fifth District. And I am, my intent is not to point fingers, but to educate. We have no power over that. We don't even have a say. We can request it, and she's made many a phone calls. And it was even conversations we had coming into the State Rep location. You know, the one-fifteenth, one-sixteenth has four different locations. We have to staff all of that. That's our tax dollars paying for four locations just for the one-fif, one-fifteen? Right, right. One-sixteen, it's four polling locations in West Haven for the one-sixteenth, with just that one person, and that's trying to figure out ways how to save money, but we don't get a side. And so, I would encourage those conversations to be had with them.
I, I think that's, that's a great, that's a great idea, and I certainly will be speaking to the Registrar about that, so thank you, guys.
No, thank you.
For your, your comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Karen, Salon and I talked today about this, and she asked me the name of the company, and I told her it was GEO.
Yes.
Okay, so, maybe, is this appropriate time to talk about this now? Okay, I was told by the Registrar that it was South Central Regional Council of Governments.
No, it was up to us, and we had an implication.
Of what company, and they do a lot of work for the city.
Okay, so it was definitely GEO?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else, yes?
Eleanor Slomby, eighteen, Fourth Avenue. Yeah, so respecting all the incredible work that's gone into this and the numbers.
And the spatial thinking and all of those multiple layers. So, I've been switched, so I'm getting reoriented from Fourth to Third. And I see that Third, a lot of it is in as, this map has nothing to do with zoning, of course, but I happen to know the zoning map, so I know that a lot of the Third is in the, what's called the waterfront design district. And I'm just curious about the parcel that's still commonly known as the Havens, regardless of what it might be in the future. Is that, it was in the Third District, is that now in the Second District, it looks like? And could I understand the rationale for that? Because I know there's no population there to count. So, the Third looks a little unnaturally cut off from the water, but I'm sure there was a rationale for the new inclusion of the Havens parcel in number two.
From what I was told, it's still going to be in that district, the Third District, yes?
No, no.
It's not.
No, it's in the Second.
Second, yeah.
It'll be second.
I don't know, rationale?
I don't know if there's a rationale, but there's a, there's a conversation in regards to, if you look at the entire shorefront, all of it is the Second District. And genuinely, speaking to the, to the individual that represents that, that, there wasn't a rhyme or reason. It's just, it's the entire coast, and the entire coast is there. Well, in that discussion, when we were all thinking is that there's the, and I apologize, there's like the community down there, the bird sanctuary, all of that kind of impacts each other. And we, as a committee, most of us thought it kind of just made sense. And like you're saying, it's not a population, but it is maybe an accountability, but you know, the person who's going to be in that district representing them represents that. You know, it's just.
Okay, again, just want to point out on the zoning side, the waterfront design district is, has some particular guidelines that businesses in the Third District are going to need to build to. So, it's a little awkward to have, you know, to kind of have to straddle. I guess that's the case a lot of times, that business people have to kind of straddle a couple of different districts in there. I don't know if you would call it lobbying, or.
But this is just where people vote.
That is, that is absolutely true.
Right, so that, I, I, and I apologize, I guess I don't see what that means. Like this is just voting, this isn't about.
Right, but if a particular address is within the Third District, from a representation standpoint, their city councilperson that represents their business address is, in some ways, going to have to.
Defer or coordinate to another city councilperson who represents the waterfront, because the waterfront design district guidelines talk about making use of the waterfront and being oriented to the waterfront. And so, if you're in the Third District, that's just what I'm pointing out.
Oh, no, okay, I, right, and I hear what, so I see what you're saying. So, I think that, that the council people, you know, like, I think it's the Seventh District. They have all the fire departments. Like they, that one councilperson coordinates with all the fire departments, where I in the, in the center. I, I have, you know, Chief O'Brien in the Center Fire District, which is my main. So, I hear what you're, I, I understand what you're saying now. I just, I agree, but I think it's stuff that.
Yeah.
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 But thank you for bringing.
I'm just bringing.
Yeah, oh, no, no, and I thank you, so I hear what you're saying, yes.
Okay.
Any, anything else? Anybody else? Anybody else have anything?
For the second time, any other comments? For the third and final time, any other comments? Mr. Chairman, the time is now seven seventeen, and the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton. The time is seven seventeen, and now we will open up for public hearing. There's a one-time speaking rule. Please wait to be recognized, approach the podium, give your name and address. Please address the council with your concern. Speaking meeting attendees and members are expected to deserve proper decorum at all times. The use of profane abuse or disparaging language directed at the members of the City Council, city officials, city employee, or members of the general public will not be tolerated. Anybody would like to speak?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Peter Alfano, thirty-one Lake Avenue. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my residents at thirty-one Lake Avenue, but also on behalf of my neighbors and many of the residences on the Lower Lake Pips Cove River side of Lake Avenue. With the residents of Lake Avenue that are present, please raise your hand. In consideration of the council's time, there are many details that I will not be presenting tonight. However, I'm going to stick to a timeline and the facts as they pertain to the issues of Lake Avenue, so you have an understanding of the history and the attempts made to try and get city officials to recognize and address the issues associated with Lower Lake Pips and the Cove River. Please forgive me if I read from my notes. For eight years before, well before my family and I moved into the neighborhood, there has been an issue with flooding, erosion, and damage caused by Lower Lake Pips and the Cove River waterway that runs behind our homes. The damage became so bad that in twenty seventeen, the residents on our side of the street received a letter from the Office of the Corporation Council of the City of West Haven informing the residents that the city had arranged for the correction of the damage caused by the Cove River waterway. This letter is included in one of the packets that I have given to Councilman Boris. The plan was to replace the failed side walls with new construction and replace the lost topsoil caused by water damage. Several residents allowed entry to their, to their properties to have this damage corrected. Since that time, as a result of Tropical Storm Jose, September twenty seventeen, Hurricane Dorian, September twenty nineteen, Tropical Storm ECAS, August twenty twenty, and Tropical Storm Elsa, July twenty twenty-one, there have been excessive, an excessive number of issues regarding flooding of people's yards, homes, property damage, both inside and outside houses, and excessive erosion that is causing many of us to lose our property line. As you will hear tonight, over the past several years, we, as a neighborhood, have made many attempts to contact and meet with city officials to inform them of our issues and ask for assistance. However, our efforts have fallen on deaf ears. We are hopeful, after our presentation tonight, the county, the City Council will help facilitate the repairs and maintenance that need to be addressed with respect to the water flow of Lake Pips and the Cove River, as it is of vested interest in the city as well. I'm going to give you a brief overview of some of the homes most affected by these longstanding mismanaged issues. Forty-five, the first is forty-five Lake Avenue, which is at the top of Lake Avenue. It's owned by Lisa McCarthy. She has been at the residence for eight years. This house resides at the top of Lake Avenue and sits in front of Lower Lake Pips. This is where the stem of all the issues is, is starting. When the house was purchased, the Lower Lake Pips was an open waterway with a couple of downed trees, and people would ice skate there in the winter. Since then, backyard, the backyard is flooded, has flooded during storms due to excessive overgrown vegetation within the waterway behind the house. Excessive vegetation growth, along with sedimentation, has created islands within the waterway, changing the course of water flow, leading to the flooding of the backyard and the home. Excessive erosion of the waterway has uncovered a sewer line within the waterway in Lower Lake Pips that needed to be secured. However, the sewer line is still a major concern. Further reinforcement is needed and has not been done. Lisa first contacted the city in twenty fourteen with regards to trash, downed tree limbs, and islands starting to form within the lake. She followed up with communications about every six months. Twenty seventeen, she reached out to the Commissioner of Inland Wetland Water Course Agency when the Main Street project was being done, and actually met with the Commissioner at her house. In twenty eighteen, numerous emails back and forth with the Commissioner were done with regards to the waterways about the promises to have cleaned it. In twenty eighteen, Lisa started sending emails to the new mayor, followed by the Director of Public Works that came by her house and viewed the situation, and was supposed to view maps and get back to her. After that, in twenty eighteen, the city engineer came to her house. However, all of this was ignored until the sewer line became an issue. In twenty twenty, the sewer line was exposed. Lisa contacted the City Hall about the manhole cover exposed. The Director of Public Works agreed to fix it and secure the manhole cover of the sewer line. However, further attention is still needed. In May twenty twenty-one, Lisa reached out to State Representative Dorinda Boer. They met with the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Representative Boer told them that the water has to get addressed and asked what permits where she needed to be, she needed to pull at the state level. She said leftover grant money from the Seagate projects should also be used towards cleaning up this waterway situation. Representative Boer believed an independent engineering company should come in and assess the situation. In her efforts to get these issues resolved, Lisa has reached out to the Director of Public Works, City Engineer, the mayor, the Commissioner of Inland Wetland Water Course Agency, various City Council members, and Representative Dorinda Boer. Thirty-one Lake Avenue, which is owned by myself and my wife Jennifer, we are three years at the residence. Our main issues are the flooding and extended complete drought of the Cove River that runs directly behind our property. Constant shift in water pressure and lack of water pressure has caused the movement of the land, resulting in cracks in our foundation and surrounding neighborhood, neighbors' foundations. Large sinkholes have formed in our yard and neighbor's yard and continue to form. Riprap, the pseudo-stone wall that was put in place in twenty seventeen by the, by the city, has completely eroded and fallen into the, into Cove River, narrowing the waterway. Rocks have become extremely loose and displaced, causing safety issues with people, children, and pets. Excessive vegetation, trees, and other types of brush have been growing unchecked and unmaintained. This complete overgrowth has, has, and mismanaged maintenance restricts the flow of the water, causing backups and flooding during rainstorms. Overall, my wife and I are concerned with the devaluation of our home and property. We first contacted the city in the fall of twenty nineteen. We contacted the Department of Public Works over concerns of the riprap the city had installed on our side. It was becoming unstable and falling into the creek with excessive flooding and erosion of our property line. We also expressed concern about the overgrowth of the vegetation at the time. Department of Public Works came out and spoke to me and said it was a work in progress, and would be getting someone to take care of it. Nothing was done. Over the next three years, we made numerous phone calls and emails to Department of Public Works. The emails included the mayor and other city officials. The situation grew worse and worse, and still nothing has been done. In our efforts to get these issues resolved, we reached out to Department of, Director of Public Works, the City Engineer, the mayor, Commissioner of Inland Wetland Water Course Agency, various City Council members, and Representative Dorinda Boer. Twenty-three Lake Avenue, I'm working my way down Lake Avenue now. These are the houses directly behind the Cove River. Craig Lean and Joanna Funk are the owners. They've been there for ten years at this address. Their main issue is that the Cove River has been eroding land from the backyard since the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when the city came to correct the damage. Contractors arranged the rocks in such a way that it narrowed the waterway and impacted their property line. Craig and Joanne have included pictures in the packet that I have given Councilman Boris. Due to the erosion, there are now exposed tree roots, causing concern with each rain and windstorm that comes through. Craig and Joanne have had to remove and discard large limbs from the Cove River from past storms on their own. from past storms on their own. Nineteen Lake Avenue is owned by Nazabungu, she has been there for three years at this address. Her main issues are the pressure of the Cove River and the lack of pressure of the Cove River, pulling the dirt from underneath her deck, which backs directly up to the Cove River. These posts are being pulled from underneath her deck, and the post supports need to be replaced or the deck is, will collapse. She is not able to use her deck safely, posing a safety issue to her and her baby. Boulders have fallen to the bottom of the Cove River, exposing the tarp under the riprap, creating instability in the flow of the water during bad storms. Excessive, once again, excessive vegetation, trees, and other types of brush have been growing unchecked and unmaintained, and has narrowed the waterway. She began to reach out in the fall of twenty nineteen to the Director of Public Works, City Engineer, and the Wetlands Chairperson. Our last house that I'm going to speak about, eleven Lake Avenue, is owned by Madeline Malino. She's been there for eighteen years at this address. She is the second-to-last house on Lake Avenue as you move towards Main Street. Madeline has had numerous incidences of basement flooding due to improper water flow of the Cove River, because as it moves from forty-five Lake Avenue down through the Cove River, she is the recipient of all of this water that is moving through this narrowed waterway. She's had to replace her furnace and electrical equipment and appliances in the basement several times. First flood, the insurance deductible was five thousand with an additional twenty-two hundred out of pocket, and the second flood was another seven thousand. In her efforts to get these issues resolved, Madeline has reached out to the Director of Public Works, the City Engineer, the mayor, Commissioner of Inland Wetland Water Course Agency, various council members, and Representative Dorinda Borr. Due to the fact that no one at City Hall was addressing our concerns, we, as a neighborhood, reached out to the State Representative Dorinda Borr, who has been beyond helpful and has made every effort to attend meetings and offer funding to the city to help resolve the situation. Representative Borr is willing to do anything she needs to do at the state level to assist us in moving forward on these issues. She has requested plans from the city numerous times, yet has received no response. As a result, her hands are tied with what she can do to help us at the state level. State Representative Borr, as well as City Councilman Victor Boris, have toured the damage on several occasions. We have had two meetings with the Department of Public Works and other city officials. The first meeting took place on Friday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. here at City Hall. During this meeting, city officials finally sat down to listen to our concerns and promised a plan of action that is documented in the packets, in an email that I had sent summarizing the minutes. As a result of this meeting, the Department of Public Works and various city officials were to add existing retaining wall behind House Number Eleven, bring the riprap back to original condition and height behind House Number Thirty-One. These are all things that we had agreed to at this meeting. The Director of Public Works was to come and inspect vegetation growing in the Cove River behind House Number Thirty-One, Twenty-three, Nineteen, Eleven, and Three. The Tree Warden was to come and inspect the trees that line the Cove River behind House Number Thirty-One, Twenty-three, Nineteen, Eleven, and Three, and submit a written report within thirty days. The tree within the creek, be, within the creek, okay, within the Cove River, behind Number Twenty-three, was to be removed. It's still there. City was to determine the property line between the deck and the Cove River behind House Number Nineteen. City Attorney was to review potential ownership of Cove River. Sediment maintenance in Lower Lake Pips was to be carried out this spring. At the time of this meeting, the Director of Public Works stated it was currently out to bid. Lastly, we were to convene, convene a follow-up meeting thirty, in thirty days. The second meeting took place Friday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, five P M. here at City Hall. This meeting took place as a promised thirty-day follow-up to the first meeting to inform us of progress and review ownership of the Cove River. This meeting included a presentation from the City of West Haven Attorney from Corporation Council on the city and state statutes explaining Cove River is a non-navigable waterway. And due to the fact that it is a non-navigable waterway, the residents of Number Thirty-One, Twenty-three, Nineteen, Eleven, and Three are the rightful owners of the Cove River, its banks, and in some instances, beyond. However, I contacted my attorney, and she reviewed my deed and informed me that in order to own something, you, one must have it deeded to them. There is nothing in my home purchase deed that shows that I was given ownership of a river. Furthermore, there is nothing in any of my home purchase paperwork, and none of my neighbors, as I'm assuming, that gives me any waterway rights whatsoever. Additionally, the fact that the city came and made repairs to the collapsing walls of the Cove River in twenty seventeen shows that they took ownership and interest of this issue, and as residents of Lake Avenue, we expect the city to, will continue to take ownership and address these issues. The residents of Lake Avenue are not the owners of the Cove River. Also during this meeting, Department of Public Works stated that the easements were needed, easements were needed for city officials to gain access to Lake Avenue properties. I was responsible for collecting the information and emailing it to the Director of Public Works, which I did, and there was no follow-through. During this meeting, we were informed that the applications to N C R S for Houses Number Three and Number Eleven had been made and are awaiting determination for eligibility. This could take up to two years. We were informed that another level of mafia block and fill would be placed behind House Number Three and Number Eleven. Within three to four weeks, the Director of Public Works contacted the owners of six ninety-seven Main Street for an easement agreement to obtain permission to access to the property. Riprap would be brought back to the original condition and height behind House Number Thirty-One and Number Twenty-three, kind of the same things that we discussed at the first meeting. The Director of Public Works would inspect vegetation growing in the creek behind Houses Thirty-One, Twenty-three, Nineteen, Eleven, Three, once he received easement agreements from all neighbors, which I did forward, and nothing was done. The Tree Warden, once again, would inspect the trees behind Houses Thirty-One, Twenty-three, Nineteen, Eleven, and Three, once the easement agreements were received. The Director of Public Works was hoping that, to get the Tree Warden out the week of eleven twenty-two, eleven twenty-three, eleven twenty-four, with a report to follow the week of eleven twenty-nine. Residents were very concerned about the tree impeding water flow behind Twenty-three. This is the tree that is actually in the Cove River. Representative Borr suggested low SIP funds to address the tree concerns along the Cove River, as she did attend this meeting. Once again, we were promised the, the estimated property lines for Number Nineteen would be obtained and shared with the homeowner by Wednesday, eleven twenty-four, twenty-two, or twenty-one, excuse me. Once again, we were told a bid was being prepared for sediment maintenance in Lower Lake Pips for this, for this spring, which has not happened. Commissioner of Inland Wetland Water Course Agency was to look into possible sources of trash and hydraulic odor contaminating the Cove River, and city officials were to be looking into options for redirecting water flow from Lower Lake Pips. Other than myself providing easement permissions to the Director of Public Works, none of these actions have been followed through. In conclusion, and I thank you for listening to, to this. In conclusion, after over eight years of problems that have devalued all of our properties and are now causing significant safety issues to the residents who live on Lower Lake Pips Cove River side of Lake Avenue, we have had no choice but to contact Attorney for Representation. We are now working with an independent adjuster to file a claim for devaluation of multiple properties and safety issues due to negligence of the City of West Haven. However, we are hoping that the city council can help us avoid going down this path and facilitate the repairs and maintenance that need to be addressed with respect to the water flow of Lake Pips and the Cove River the city took responsibility for in twenty seventeen. While we understand the council is not permitted to respond to public comment, it is our hope that once the packets of information are reviewed, that the council will follow up with us. We really appreciate and thank you for your cooperation and your time and consideration. Thank you.
You said that the project went out to bid?
Yes.
And that he was, wait, could you tell me what that bid was again?
Sure, it was, it was the dredging of Lower Lake Pips.
Not dredging, it was sediment remediation.
Sediment remediation, okay.
And when did you, when did he tell you that that was out to bid?
He told us it was out to bid at our first meeting in September, Sept-, uh, hang on a second, I got the date right here. Let's see, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. So it was supposed to be done this, this spring. And then when we met again in November nineteenth of twenty twenty-one, he said that it, he was getting ready to put it out to bid, so it, it wasn't out to bid.
I just want to find out if it has gone out to bid.
That's, so would we.
No, 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 I know, that's why I just wanted to, can we, can, can we follow?
There was also in May of twenty twenty-one, prior to that meeting, independent surveyors, independent engineers that came out with Tom McCarthy Republic Works to assess the situation of these islands that formed. Because it's not just these islands that are forming, that are pushing the waterways, it's the way the water rushes through and around these islands. It's taking down trees on the banks, blocking the water flow, which then backs up the sediment, which then starts the growth again of new islands. So that's why the independent engineers were brought out.
It's also pulling down the huge boulders that the city lined the sides of the river with, and depositing them down at the end of the lake, which would be.
Blocking.
Eleven Lake Ave, which would be me. So now, it, it's blocking any water from, it, it just goes right over.
Did you find out if the bid went out?
Councilman, I don't want to.
Well, I was on the council line there, but he hasn't, when I went to, actually, when I went to.
Since they've contacted you.
When I went to the meeting, actually, Tom McCarthy didn't want me in the meeting, because I was in the council.
But that's not my question, with respect, I'm asking, do you know if this bid went out?
So I tried, I tried, I tried, but he never answered my emails or my texts, so, he never gave me an answer.
Have you inquired of the procurement directors or the finance department if this bid has yet to go out?
No.
Okay, do you want to follow up?
Yeah, I'll follow up, but I don't, um. Um, let me ask you a question.
I, I still have the floor, Chairman, I just want to make sure. I think it's really important that we find out for you, almost a year later, if this bid has gone out.
Thank you so much.
And I think that's where, not that, we, we need to get the bid out. So if the councilman can do that for us now, we will know and then be able to move forward and see how that helps in the turnaround time on that, even though there's a lot of other stuff to go on.
Right, right.
But I think.
Yeah, that's the start of the problem.
That's, that's the big part of it, okay. I mean, I'm just trying to just determine, since you're here in front of us, what I can do to help.
Yeah, and then, and then, of course, as Madeline said, the, the boulders that are, that are, the riprap that's, that's being pulled down into the waterway, it's, it's an issue.
How to move, remove that?
It needs, yeah, it needs to be brought back.
I had tile come up, and I was extra yesterday, I don't know if I need that other stuff with respect.
Yeah, so, when you go down to, matter of fact, we were, my wife and I were just walking down to the beach this morning, but when you go down to the beach, you see the big, huge stone walls, and you see the big, huge stone wall. Now, those don't move. I mean, no matter how many storms we have, those don't move, they, they maintain their shape, they maintain their location. In terms of, in terms of the rocks that line the Cove River, when we get those big storms, which are occurring more frequently, the, the water is moving so fast, and it's coming up so high, that it's bringing, it's pulling up those boulders, bringing them down, and depositing them elsewhere. And so, I'm to the point now where, when I am weed-whacking along the creek, I have to be careful as to where I step, because there's going, there might be a new hole, and there might be loose stone. A stone that was, a stone that was not loose a week before that. So it's, it's becoming an issue, and, and our, my property line is getting, you know, pretty soon my, my shed is going to be in the Cove River.
Council, with respect, would you like to just see a picture of the violence of it?
I would love to, I, I'm sorry, is that okay, can I just?
So, in the essence of time, everybody, I, I, we don't normally do this, so I don't want to, I don't want to start something that we don't normally do.
And we do, we do have pictures, we do, if, if we had audiovisual here, you guys would be amazed, okay? But if, we do have pictures and video upon request from the council.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
We will follow up on that.
Thank you, much appreciated.
So, Chairman, I just think it's important for us, why, that's, hey, hang on, hold on.
No, don't have the floor. I said, in the essence of time, I don't want to get into a question and answer thing. If you want to see the concerned citizen afterwards, I'm okay with that. I did not say that. Anybody else like to speak? That's why, you're correct, I apologize. Steph, Paula?
So we need them to come up and state their name, and, you know, I need to have that happen, I know, but four other people didn't. Just bear with me, I have to get my notes. And my glasses. Can you hear me?
Name and address.
Paula Nodarino, Twenty Hall Street, West Haven, Connecticut. I'd just like to address the council before I start talking and just let them know that the matter of which I'm going to talk tonight is of an adult nature, and I don't see any children in the audience, so I think it'll be okay. Okay, the city council has voted in the past on whether they had confidence in Mayor Rossi. The council has voted unanimously to declare racism a public health crisis, and the council voted to give their approval for raises for the police department with two point four million dollars in pandemic relief funding. Now, I want to make it perfectly clear that I'm not here tonight to debate the outcome of the votes. In fact, I'm glad you voted. Voting is a good thing and part of the democratic process. That being said, tonight, I want to talk about Roe v. Wade. In light of the decision to overturn Roe v. Wade, I'm asking the city council to take a stance and vote on whether you and the city stand for reproductive rights. And I would like to speak on the subject tonight, if that's okay with everyone. Now, I realize that abortion and reproductive rights are a very contentious issue, and everyone is entitled to their opinion. But the fact remains that the Supreme Court took away a constitutional right that was given to women in nineteen seventy-three, and since approximately fifty percent of the West Haves population is women, could be wrong on that, percentage-wise, it's time to have a conversation on this subject. I have become increasingly displeased at the many reasons why some people think that abortion should be outlawed. One could argue that the rules and regulations of your house of worship should not dictate how the rest of us live our lives. There are many religions in this country, so whose rules do you want to abide by? Should we force people to not eat pork? Should we force people to dress a certain way? Should we tell people what day of the week is the Sabbath? Should we force people to fast on certain religious holidays? The First Amendment says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." So while some people are busy exercising their religion, I would appreciate it if they wouldn't force it on me or other people. Then we have the people who say they believe in science. They believe that science as the fetus is a human being, so they're anti-abortion. Yet many of these same people could potentially be one of the same folks who are against the COVID vaccine, saying they didn't believe in science and wouldn't get the vaccine, because it's their body and it's their choice. Okay, I also realize that some people find abortion morally wrong. You know, one could argue that cheating on one's spouse is morally wrong. Should we outlaw that and arrest people who cheat? And recently, I've heard opinions from some Connecticut politicians who feel that abortion negatively affects young black girls and black women, so they are anti-abortion. Not, but at the same time, the N double A C P had their own recent opinion on the overturning of Roe v. Wade. They stated, quote, "This is especially devastating to the freedom of black women." They were also quoted as saying, quote, "This Supreme Court is turning back the clock to a dangerous era where basic constitutional rights only exist for a select few," said Portia White, Policy and Legislative Affairs Vice President for the N double A C P. She went on to say, quote, "They've stripped away our right to vote, and now women have lost their right to their own body, what's next?" Now, I want everybody to be perfectly clear tonight. I cannot and will not respond to either of the Connecticut politician, any of the Connecticut politicians, or the N double A C P, for that matter, their opinion on abortion, because I will not speak for black women, because I am not black. But I feel that I can speak for a seventy-one-year-old white woman, such as myself, who protested for reproductive rights back in the sixties and the seventies. I read and saw the newspaper articles depicting photos of bloodied and naked women in hotel rooms that died of botched illegal abortions. I could speak of the young women that I knew then, who had illegal abortions, because they're. I could speak of the young women that I knew then, who had illegal abortions because their contraceptives didn't work, and they felt they were not ready for motherhood. Or the ones that did not want to quit their, quit college, or the ones that recently started a new job with not the best of healthcare, or they simply could not afford another child. Now, I can only, I can also speak of my own story. Back in the 80s, I gave birth to a much-wanted baby girl. Her name was Marissa. She was born with only half a heart and had no aorta. There was absolutely nothing that could be done to save her life. She needed a heart transplant, which hadn't been perfected yet. Even if they could have found a donated heart, she died in my arms in intensive care at 16 days old. When I became pregnant again, I had to wait over three months. Three months. That's after the first trimester, for a very sophisticated ultrasound to determine if the heart was fully formed and the aorta was present. The ultrasound could not be done earlier, because the doctors were unable to see the heart before then. So me and my husband had a decision to make. What to do if this pregnancy had the same defect? Because the doctor said it could be genetic. We made the decision to have an abortion if the defect was present. And you know what? We made that decision without the help of clergy, politicians, judges, Supreme Court justices, and religious zealots. And I want everybody to know that my husband and I do have religion, I'm a Christian and he's Jewish, okay? Fortunately, this pregnancy turned out to be fine, and I didn't need the abortion. We went on to have two more children, and each time we dreaded the ultrasound that would determine if this pregnancy had the same heart defect. We were lucky, all of their hearts were fine. I tell you this story so that you can understand that not every woman wakes up one morning while pregnant and says, gee, maybe I'll have an abortion today. Sometimes things happen that you have no control over, like what happened to us. Okay, so, all those silly comments like, oh, just use a condom, or every woman knows if she wants an abortion by the first trimester, no. Those comments come from people who have not walked in someone else's shoes. There are women who find out in their second trimester and beyond that the fetus has no brain, or perhaps has a medical condition that will result in stillbirth, or dying inside before birth, or dying shortly after birth, so they have a late-term abortion. Currently, in some states, there are women who have an ectopic pregnancy, cannot get an abortion, and will die. There are women being denied, right now, medical care they need during a miscarriage, such as a DNC, because the doctors and hospitals are worried about lawsuits and getting accused of doing an abortion. These women could potentially bleed to death. And I'm sure everyone in this room has heard about the 10-year-old rape victim who had to travel across state lines to get an abortion. So, I have just one more final comment before I leave the podium. Abortion should be a private matter between a woman, her doctor, her husband and/or significant other, and perhaps a clergy member. So if your morals, your religion, your science, your race tell you that abortion is wrong, then don't have one. But please, allow other women to make these decisions without your interference. I ask the city council to vote on whether they stand for reproductive rights, or they do not. Thank you very much, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you for your comments.
And I also, if I can just approach, I have some pictures, I don't know if this is allowable. I have a picture that, a couple of pictures I'd like to actually let the council, because sometimes I feel it's very important to put a picture, a face. No, 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 it's just a picture of my little baby. You don't have to see him if you don't want to, it's a free country. I just like everybody to take a picture, this is a picture of my daughter, who died at 16 days old. That when I became pregnant again, I had to make a decision whether or not I wanted to go through this again. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Paula.
Your mask is up here.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna move this little kitty corner so my butt isn't in Jerry's face. Yeah, it would be the first. Anyway, alright, um, at least me. My name is Steven Mullins, it's 22 Oak Road in Allentown. Alright, so, bear with me, relax, I'm gonna be up here for a little while. Well, I didn't prepare to say this, but I'm gonna say this in light of the recent comment. The West Haven City Council has a lot of work that it has to do on a daily basis, more work than most people would know. More committees, being out in the public, public events, you've got a lot in your hands. It is my recommendation that you leave the issues of national merit and state merit to the state legislators, and let them deal with the abortion matter. And our Congress and our Supreme Courts and so forth, let them deal with it, because you've got a lot of things to deal with here. And if you take that matter up, I'm gonna be very angry, because there's a lot of things I'm gonna be discussing right now that are being ignored. So, keep your priorities straight, worry about what's going on in West Haven, and let those who are elected and appointed to deal with matters of abortion or other social issues, let them deal with that in Hartford and Washington respectively. So now, from what, for what I actually came up here for. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my thanks to the council for, um, I'm sorry, I'm wearing some granny's that I would normally not wear, so I'm having a little trouble seeing. I lost my glasses, so I don't, I can't get an appointment until August 4th, so I'm gonna struggle through this, but I'm gonna manage. No, I'm good, Mike, I'll manage. Alright, so this, this is embarrassing, so, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council for a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, right now, approving the salaries for the West Haven Police. Now, as Chief Purno alluded to, some weeks ago, before this very council, that for the purposes of retention of our officers, for many years, West Haven Police Department has been more of a training facility for cops. So basically, cops get trained, they go through the academy at our expense, and I'm guessing roughly around $90,000, $100,000 for training and so forth. They're with us for a while, then they go off to other departments where they're actually going to make some serious money. Now, we were one of the lowest-paid areas for, for new police officers for quite some time, and so now what, what you did, we're basically where we should be, and able to compete with other areas. See, prior to the salary increase, West Haven starting salary, already we'd said that. A few weeks back, at the city council meeting, there was a very kind and gentle-hearted, concerned citizen. His name was Larry Rice, and he spoke here regarding the use of the Thin Blue Line flag at the Public Works Facility in the 4th District. If it's still the 4th District. I don't know, haven't looked at the lines. He was angry about the Thin Blue Line being used, and the Thin Blue Line flag has become rather misunderstood in the last 10 years or so. The history of it is over a couple hundred years old, or nearly a couple hundred years old, I should say. Mr. Rice said in his remarks that it reminded him very much of the Confederate flag. And as I just stated, the Thin Blue Line flag has been rather misunderstood for the past decade or so. It has been extremely misunderstood in this country. We've had numerous cases over the past 10 years or so of police officers throughout this country acting inappropriately, particularly to people of the black community, most notably. But I am not going to stand here and paint all of our police officers, whether in West Haven or any other place, with one broad stroke of a brush. Now, there are many cases of inappropriate activity by police officers. Now, I don't know if he's currently still in hospital or not, but just about three weeks ago, a month or so, there was a situation in New Haven where a prisoner was put in the back of, what's commonly called a paddy wagon, but then may not be appropriate these days, and he was not strapped in appropriately, and he is paralyzed. Those police officers who were involved in that, after an investigation, and if found in the wrong, should be disciplined according to personnel. And if anything of criminal negligence is involved, they should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. But, out of the thousands and thousands of police officers in this country, whether they be called officers, deputies, troopers, constables, or whatever you happen to call them, or whatever locality happens to call them, they are on, they're, put their lives on the line for us every day, in ways that we know and ways that we do not know. So, it is not right to paint all police officers in the negative light. The Public Works Facilities does not just have a Thin Blue Line flag, along with two American flags, they also have a Thin Red Line flag. And the Thin Red Line flag. The Thin Red Line flag supports our firefighters. In particular, West Haven, we've got three, three departments. There's also a Thin Green Line flag, we don't see too many of those, but they exist, and that supports all veterans. And our unsung heroes, the Thin Yellow Line, supports those true first responders, and they are the 911 dispatchers, who are often forgotten about. So whether it be blue, red, green, or yellow, they're all, they all matter. Yes, black lives matter, and blue lives matter also, and red lines, lives matter, and yellow lives matter, and green lives matter. All lives matter, and more importantly, all souls matter. So I wanna take this opportunity to thank Commissioner McCarthy from Public Works for displaying both the Thin Blue Line flag, as well as the Thin Red Line flag. Now, let the record show that I have now thanked Commissioner McCarthy of Public Works for something. Because right now, it's gonna be the opposite. So my next subject matter. The other day, my 15-year-old boy felt nostalgic. And his mother picked him up from work, and he asked her, hey ma, I haven't been to the, to the field in a while. He used to play Little League. He's 15 years old now, so he's thinking back, and so she drove him, drove him over to the Morris Park. And it was appalling to look at. He came back and told me how horrible it was, it's nothing like it was before. And so, a few days later, I drove through Morris Park myself, and it is worse than I ever imagined. One would never know that Little League was played there just recently. So I haven't been to a Little League game in a while, because my kids are old now. But, I could not imagine that it got like that in the past couple of months. This is pretty bad, and it needs to be addressed. There are many, many areas in town that need to be addressed. That being one, and that is heartbreaking. Morris Park was part of my life growing up, and then became part of my, my children's lives. We practically spent half of our, our time at Morris Park for, for the time period, they were in softball, and T-ball, softball, and, and baseball. And it's implorable, and it's something we can do about it, but it's not being done. Now, the argument could be that, okay, not many young people are as involved in Little League today as they were before, which is true, and it's very unfortunate, but it's true. However, whether there's young people involved in West Haven Little League or not, if the city manages that property, it should be taken care of, regardless. We're paying for it, whether there's participants or not. A few days ago, I was driving south on Campbell Avenue, and I had to stop, because I got a text. I was about to get on the highway, on 95 South. So I pulled over into Hall Street, which is behind the former Thompson School. And, um, I answered the text, sitting in back of Thompson School, and as I'm typing away, I happened to look over to my right, and I could not believe what I saw. Thompson School has not been an active school in the city of West Haven since 2010, I believe it was 2010, 2011 school year when it ceased being a, a school. However, because, just like Morris Park, just because it is not active does not mean that the city should not keep it up. There's graffiti in the back of the school, there are weeds everywhere, and vegetated growth everywhere, you can barely see the building, and it is an embarrassment. Regardless of it being an active school or not, there are residents who live on rigid street, who live on Hall Street, and who live on that block of Washington Avenue, who have to look at that every day. And I am shocked that no one has complained yet. And if they have complained, and I'm unaware of it, obviously, nothing was done about it. Not to mention walking downtown West Haven. I must admit, I don't see as many nips as I used to. However, why do we have weeds growing through every crack downtown West Haven? It looks implorable. City Hall is smack downtown West Haven, and Public Works has people here downtown in City Hall. The mayor's here, so everyone has to come to this building, you're here now, so you've come here, you've passed it, you have to have seen it. It looks implorable. If you look at Center Street, the corner of Center, and Campbell, going down there, going towards the Masonic Temple, there is nothing but vegetation growing from the walkways. It's something very easy to do, in one, one hour of someone with a weed whacker, and it's done. Not to mention, we just had last week a beautiful ribbon cutting for that beautiful bridge that connects the Sandy Hood Charlotte Bacon Park to the Veterans Memorial Park down at Bradley Point. And it is absolutely beautiful. But go further down on the, on Boardwalk, and we've got garbage overflowing. Now, I don't know about it right now, this minute, maybe it's been done the past couple of days, and I'm not aware of it, but it shouldn't have gotten to the point that I saw on Facebook, when someone posted it on, I don't know, the way it is or something. Those multiple garbage cans that are overflowing. And that's not the first time, because I've witnessed it myself for years. How hard is it for us to just do the basics, just the simple basics of stuff? I know you've got a difficult job. Budgetary matters, everything else, personnel matters, you've got a lot of difficult stuff, but this is just basic stuff. This is regular, everyday stuff, and we've got a group of men, and maybe some women, who are working every day to take care of the streets, and take care of litter and so forth. Just do the job, come to work, clock in, do what you gotta do. Just do the job. Come to work, clock in, do what you gotta do. Clock out for your lunch, clock back in, do what you gotta do. Clock out and go home, and the next business day, come back and do it again. Very simple as that. The only thing I'm asking for are the basics. There's no reason why Thompson School should look the way it looks. That is, months of neglect, probably entire season of neglect. And the same thing with Morris Park. Now, the third and last issue I have really hurts, and I don't really want to talk about it, but it's something that needs to be talked about, if I can find it. Yeah, a little hesitant even wanting to find it because I don't really want to talk about the subject matter, but it's gotta be discussed. All right. So, West Haven has a history and a culture of corruption that has now come to light. And it has been going on long before, long before the activities of last year of a city employee who just so happened to be at the time a state representative and his wife in the alleged theft of hundreds of thousands of dollars of COVID, federal COVID relief funds. We are in a very sensitive time in the city of West Haven's history. We are being looked at by, with a microscope by the state of Connecticut. And more importantly, we are being looked at by a microscope by the people of the city of West Haven who have lost their trust in government. And it is going to take a very long time to gain it back. So as a result of the aforementioned activities of last year, we need to hold our public officials to the highest of ethics. These should not be, there should not be any thought of unethical behavior by our public officials. So the image of a sitting councilperson and fire commissioner signing invoices for matters involving a company owned by him and his family is a complete conflict of interest. And that is something that needs to be addressed. Government officials, government office holders should not be using their positions as officials in actions that benefit themselves or their families. So these are the issues that we need this council to deal with. And these are the issues that you can deal with. I don't believe I have mentioned anything here that is, that is out of reach for the council. Stick to what's going on here. Let the powers that be deal with Hartford and Washington. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mull.
Excuse me, I think I'm gonna be sitting on your lap. Paige Weinstein, Twenty Flat Avenue. I apologize, I'm gonna be a little lengthy tonight as well. I'd like to address last month's meeting and talk about the Community Development Office in Black Grant. Mark and Rosa said something very important, and I don't know if anybody heard it with all the drama that was going on. The need is great, the ability to fund is limited. Meeting before last, your attitude was very derogatory towards Mark Basakia, in my opinion. That was in my opinion, in many others' opinion, which is why we saw so many people come to the last meeting. Your comments, whether they were meant to be that way or not, came off as insults and innuendos. Last month, Chairman Massaro stated that he watched the meeting, as he was not here, and he couldn't understand where the public outcry came from. I was at that meeting. I was at that first meeting. And I applaud the organizations and the individuals that came forth to remind you all who you actually work for. You all work for the residents of West Haven. Your disrespectful behavior toward that department and the staff of two prompted me to visit them to find out more about what they do. They hands-on help and facilitate our citizens that are in need. Decisions as to where the limited budget gets spent is determined by a group of individuals chosen by Mayor Rossi. The city council only has the ability to approve or disapprove the budget, not pick it apart. Two members of this council sit on that committee. I sat through that first meeting. I've watched last month's meeting twice. And I didn't see either one of those councilpeople stand and be recognized for the work that Mark and Rosa do. Chairman Massaro said a little transparency was needed to prevent the situation, the outcry. He said it was an embarrassment to the council. I agree on both those points. A little transparency. If the Finance Board had said, this is a great start, can we look at also some other nonprofits? Instead, the Finance Board said it was stale, which you all heard multiple times already, and started looking up addresses for organizations listed to prove that they could look outside West Haven. In essence, you are questioning the legitimacy of those organizations' benefit to our city. One councilperson quickly asked if the Milford Rape Crisis Center was located in Milford. I want you to know that all, that I want you to know that they average over fifty rape cases a year, the Milford Rape Crisis Center here in West Haven, only West Haven. The second part of this that I want you to know is those over fifty cases a year are children, only children. Last week, I was in Rosa's office. Rosa made the comment that when she talked to you and she's entering this information, she cries. I want you to know that in last quarter's report, the youngest rape victim in West Haven, West Haven, was three months old. The next was age five, multiple six-to-ten-year-olds topped off by two seventeen-year-olds. West Haven families. West Haven families getting help and assistance with the ugliest trauma a family or individual can experience. I don't care if the Milford Rape Crisis Center is on the moon. If they are working for our citizens, why for you to go back, go back to the meeting and look at yourself looking to see what their address is? Fifty children a year. That's almost one a week. Guess what? That's one too many a week. Back to Chairman Massaro's comment regarding embarrassment. Yes, the council's behavior was embarrassing, the first time around, and only compounded by your denials during the last meeting. I appreciate Councilwoman Tucker. She asked a question of Mark. She looked him in the eyes and said, thank you. That was the only respectful behavior shown to him in that meeting. Now, I need to tell you that prior to these last meetings, I had never met these people. You all prompted me to go find out about them. Not a single apology. As a matter of fact, Councilperson Husky, you were searching your phone for minutes of the advisory board and berating the department and the board that the minutes had not been updated since April of twenty-one. You even got Attorney Tierney involved by asking. Well, I'd like to let you know that when you pull up the different boards' names on the website under agendas, there's years. And if you click on twenty-twenty-two, you can see that. And when you click on twenty-twenty-one, you will see those August meetings' minutes of twenty-one. We weren't looking at the right place. Disrespect runs rampant in this town. Disrespect was shown last meeting when Councilperson Garthwaite again requested that the chair bring forth the town engineer regarding the questionable work on Beach Street. The chair stated, he talked to the town engineer. He talked to Abdul. Abdul doesn't see their problem, so the engineer isn't coming. Basically, that to me is telling the council, too bad. That is not acceptable. You are the council. You have a right, you have a right to bring forth any town employees to discuss a matter of importance to us, your constituents. That employee cannot deem it unnecessary, nor should the chair allow him to do so. Transparency is this committee's buzzword. There is no transparency. Chairman Massaro last week met with four councilpeople at a time to discuss a new program with Public Works regarding trash. There was no posting of a special meeting. There was no official meeting. There was no agenda online. No video, nothing for us to go on. Four people at a time, no official meeting. That was disrespectful. Doing your job. Last meeting, Councilperson Donovan brought up favorably, under his committee, the sale of a plot of land. Councilperson Wat Hamilton stated it's swamp, and nothing could be built there, so she disagreed. You withdrew your motion to bring it up favorably. My question is, did you even drive by to look at this plot of land before it came up? Minimal work if you're going to bring it up. We expect you, as we voted for you, depending on what district, but we count on you, to do your job for us. I don't understand. Tonight, six-ten Campbell Avenue will be brought up for sale, potential sale at a price of eighteen thousand dollars. I've gone on the assessment board. The land alone is assessed for over forty thousand. That's not appraised, that's assessed, so that's the reduced rate. Yes, the building needs to be torn down. But if the town assesses, if the town, if you all are gonna determine that the town's assessed rates are overstated, please tell me where that line is so I can get in line. Because I'd like to think that my house is overstated. My taxes went up four times, and that's okay because I choose to live where I live. I chose to build what I chose, and I chose to build in this town. People say to me, you moved, you moved from Woodbridge to West Haven. I thought it's supposed to be the other way around. I love where I am, but I expect you all to be fair. I don't expect it just to be moved over. Just, okay, I got this request. The answer is yes. The culture in this city hall does not, does not demand or display respect. There is no level of excellence, excellence, nor, and many do, as little as possible. And I want to say straight up, that is not every department. That is far from every department. There are departments within this town hall that do an amazing job. But we need pride. There's no pride. Lee Tierney admitted to MARB that he never officially hired the attorney for the committee, the council's investigative committee, yet the committee didn't know that. On May thirty-first, you all took a vote in a special meeting and agreed to hire Attorney Burns and moved that on. Well, last week in MARB, when MARB pushed Attorney Tierney, he said, no, I've never hired them. So I reached out to the two councilpeople on the investigative committee, asking them, did you know that we never hired, that you all never hired an attorney? And their answer was no. That's obstruction. He was told to do something. He was told to move, move forward, and it never happened. Attorney Tierney came before you last month with a financial document that was from MARB regarding, regarding the Fire Department. Multiple numbers, no calculations, numbers on it were incorrect. Councilman Quagliani immediately said, wait a minute, this number doesn't work. The answer that you're all given is, oh, that's okay. Just approve it and we'll go back and we'll correct it. Why is that acceptable? Why is it acceptable for you to get paperwork that's not correct? Someone can't, that's in the Finance Department, can't produce a document that's correct? That wasn't the last time, and I'm sure it's not gonna be, I'm sure, that wasn't the first time and it's not gonna be the last time. Rick Sprier came before you recently with two documents. A bill that he said the city had just received. Yet Councilwoman Garthwaite looked and said, well, look at the date stamp. And it was dated August of last year. Then the bill for the power boats, the Police Department, power boats, boater boats. He told you they were, oh, it's a year old. Get all excited. And then from there, the story changes. Why is this culture allowed to continue? When is it gonna truly be your time to demand accurate work and appropriate work? The behavior and ethic would never, ever work in the corporate world. Is everyone aware of what it's called when a person of authority appoints friends, associates, without proper regard to their qualifications? It's called cronyism. Limited qualifications, ignorance to the rules as outlined by the city charter, low standards and lack of ethics, cronyism. This is West Haven. Our motto, least what gets it a lot, it's not my fault. EMS premium pay. Is it not a conflict of interest for the Fire Department's stipend to be voted on by an active fire commissioner? You voted. You're an active fire commissioner. You didn't step aside. As well as a past fire chief. But yet, when we voted on the community house, Councilperson Quagliani had the bill changed so that he was not in violation of his ethics. When it came to the block grant, Councilpeople Boris and O'Connor did not vote, but yet on the Fire Department, you voted. Moody's Investor Service has put our city on notice. We have thirty days to get them the documentation necessary to complete our review. Without those documents, we could be removed from bond rating. What will happen is, so, right now, we have the Dawson Street project that came up last month. The cost on that project is nine hundred thousand dollars. We need to take a bond out for it. If we have no bond rating, we are gonna pay the highest interest possible. The cost ultimately of this will be maybe two million dollars. If you go to buy a house and you have horrible credit, you are going to pay, or you buy a car and you have horrible credit. The car that you're buying, which the tag on is twenty thousand dollars, which that'd be great in today's world. But when you have horrible credit and you're gonna pay over eight years, you're ultimately paying thirty-five thousand dollars for that car. Well, that's what's gonna happen to the Dawson Project. I recommend that the council take an active measure to stay abreast of this scenario as this could greatly affect the precarious financial position of our already broken city. You all are responsible, based on the charter, to hire the firm to come in and audit us. I understand that we still have not closed out twenty-one, financial year twenty-one. When, who is managing this accounting firm that we've brought in to do this? Do they know that we need to be moving? The mayor has been on vacation for three weeks. Who is gonna manage this? Or is this just another thing where we're just all gonna lose? Last, I welcome MARB oversight and pray that they take a more hands-on approach. I know that they watch the council meetings. They said that very clearly last week. I do want to make sure, though, that you also don't feel, you all don't feel so special by getting inaccurate and incomplete data, your requests ignored, and lots of excuses. You and the MARB board have that in common. The difference is, they're gonna do something about it. Hopefully, after they break this administration's culture and they rebuild, they'll have a few, there'll be a few of you, the good ones, to take the ball and run with it. The spotlight is on all of you. MARB said they're bringing you all in to discuss this with you. This is your opportunity to show them who the good ones are. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Weinstein.
Good evening, everyone. I, I will briefly, because I think what she said, is just a couple of things. The bond rating. Oh, I'm sorry. Barry Lee Cohen, two-three-two Morgan Lane. Just a couple of things, you know, the bond rating, as was pointed out, is critical, and we don't know what is taking so long. we don't know what is taking so long. But the other thing, too, is, it all kind of falls in line, we talk about the culture of city hall and so forth. By and large, I don't mean, I don't mean the people in this room right now, because you're trying to be the best public service that you can be. And we can all make mistakes, and some of us are newer than others. And with that said, I mean, there was a number of things that I was gonna point out, but I'm not gonna re-point them out, because I think the last person just did it so beautifully. But I wanna add that, you know, when I listened to the, I believe it was the last council meeting, I was at home, I had a back problem laying on my back, but all of a sudden, I just came out with a big yawn and yawn, because Councilwoman Akrabali, I was so proud of you. And the reason why I was so proud of you was, when I was sitting in your seat, or that seat over there, there were so many times that we were, we were asking for information, should it be myself, or Councilwoman Hoski, or anybody else up here, you know, from the corporation council's office. And we always got like, we're gonna get it, or they won't answer our calls, or they won't answer our emails. And even when I was on the council, there was a mistake made that even the council people had to go through or had to copy, we couldn't call people directly. We had to copy, I think it was Lou Esposito, and copy the mayor, and then all of a sudden, which was kind of ridiculous, because we're the public servants, where anybody else out here could pick up the phone and, and call up, you know, Tom McCarthy or what have you. And it just seemed like, you know, it was Alice in Wonderland, you know, it was just like things were wrong. So when you said what we were all thinking, and, you know, I have to give you your props because you are the legislative branch. You are not subservient to the executive branch. And I do believe in the beginning of some people's terms and so forth, that, that you don't mean to do it, but sometimes you're almost justifying, justifying the executive branch what's going on there. Well, you know what? We elected you. We elected you because you're doing our public work. And so, you know, I'm so proud of many of you on the council, some of you that I don't always disagree with, but I'm so proud of many of you on the council, but I wanted to make sure that you got your props tonight. You're more than welcome and more than well-deserved. The other thing that I wanted to basically bring up is, when I was on the council, I think it was the last vote that I took, or second to last vote that I took, was on NEPCO. And I think we're all, most of us here are excited about the idea of having a brewery or taproom on the shoreline and so forth. And all of us that were councilpeople at the time got this handout, you know, the doubles and the details, and it was very well done, and for, for full disclosure, the, the marketing director there, I went to school with since I was in kindergarten, so I knew the man, I knew the gentleman and so forth, and he gave a wonderful presentation. But like anything else, as we, I believe correctly so, I believe it was unanimous that night, and a unanimous approval to allow, you know, the mayor's office to go forth with negotiations, see a lease agreement and so forth, and that was pretty much what we did. And at the time, you know, we've been following this, and I have gotten calls since then, I have no idea why, but I get calls about this. And as you will recall, and I believe it's still the same, that this was proposed as a fifty-two thousand square foot facility, okay? And then as you start reading in the papers more and more about it, you just want to, and to kind of paraphrase Councilwoman Hoski, and when you were, when you were talking about, like, listen, we wanna give everyone some type of, of reward pay, like, like we do with the police officers, the fire people, but we don't, and maybe we should be more proactive about advocating, you know? And I basically, my response to that is, you're absolutely right, but I hope that you folks, in the future, advocate to the Board of Education members that are supposed to be doing the advocating for our kids and, and so forth. But in this particular case, I wanna be able to speak about this, because you as a council, and, and we all care about economic development in this city, we all know that's gonna be the engine that's gonna give us a better quality of life, gonna, you know, help our, help our Moody's index and give us some better bond ratings, is that, that you start, that if you haven't, and I'm sure some of you have, if you talk to the Planning and Zoning Appeals, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, these, this is gonna come up to them pretty quickly. And as I basically read about stuff, and I, and I got parts of the plan in advance, and I had not read the whole thing, but I wanted to kind of make you aware that, again, I am for a taproom, okay? But I also think that we also wanna make sure that we, we do it, do it right, and we don't have buyer's remorse, okay? And with that, that fifty-two thousand square feet, about six, approximately six thousand of it is for the taproom itself, okay? That taproom, as was publicized and also in this report, on a Saturday or Sunday evening at a height, you're gonna get between a thousand and twelve hundred people there. That basically translates into, according to what they're looking to do, and looking at how many people need cars and so forth, and this could be a little bit off, but this was just pretty much, like about two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. And because it's such a big building, I mean, just the size of the building on that plot of land, okay? Right now, what you're looking at is probably about a hundred and twenty. And again, hopefully, these plans will change before it gets to where it wants to get to, but there's a, a lack of parking. There's a lack of parking. And, and again, it could be remedied, and I know that we talked about it during the presentation that was given last year, that there could be some shuttles, if you will, between point A or point B, or maybe there's some unused parking, and I'm thinking to myself, does Jimmy's really wanna have parking for that over there? Who knows? And then don't forget, because it is a taproom, and it is a production facility, per ordinance, you have to have some type of food on the premises, so there's gonna be spaces taken up for food trucks or something, because you need to account for that. These are things that, we don't wanna have the traffic jam, and unfortunately, and again, I think, I, I love taprooms, I love microbrews, I, I, I love NEPCO, I've been to the one in Woodbridge. But I have to say that, when we all talked about, we were all concerned about, as we go down Kelsey Avenue, and we see on the hill, that we, we don't wanna have a hotel, there's some high-rise being, being built there. What we have to be careful of is a couple of things, is, most of that is a production facility, okay? I mean, it is a microbrew production facility, there's the tap area, and then there's the production facility, and how is that going to look, and how's it gonna be styled and so forth? So aesthetics mean everything, especially along our shoreline, you know? The other thing, too, is, looking at, at what was, at what is starting to be proposed, again, nothing insurmountable, but there's gonna be a number of variances that, that are not surprising, not, it wouldn't surprise any of us at the time, but a number of variances that are going to be needed in terms of, like I just brought up, parking spaces, how they're gonna handle it. If they do do off-site parking, and I'm no expert at this, I can remember when I was on Planning and Zoning, that there was a certain number of feet from a school or district, you know, you have a liquor store, you're serving alcohol, from, from the high school, there's gonna be some variance there, maybe, I don't know. But there's gonna be those things, where you're gonna park your cars, are you gonna park it at the high school, the extra cars, the overflow? Is it gonna be somewhere else? How is that going to, is there something that I know has been done before, under other certain studies? I hope, it doesn't need to be done, but I'm just giving you some ideas. You might say, gee, has anyone asked for a traffic study? How many, I'll call them trucks, okay? How many trucks are gonna be in and out of that facility? What time of the day are those trucks gonna be in and out of those facilities? You know, is it going to be on off-hours? Is it gonna be during the peak hours of the morning? Those are things that I think that, from a quality of life standpoint, and I believe, and I may have this wrong, Councilwoman Garthwaite, when you were speaking here, before you became a councilwoman, and you were speaking on behalf of the second district, or the pending councilwoman, some of the things that were brought up from, from the second district, if I recall, was noise ordinances, you know, the, the, the noise, the, you know? And so those are things that I just wanna remind you about, that even though you're not on, on the, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, or Planning and Zoning Appeals, I know you, every single one of you, and most people out here care about making this successful, so I wanna kind of give you that, that basic heads up, okay? And so, there are going to be, beyond that, there are other things that seem to be what I call, what, when I worked in my private life, you know, with, with developers and marketers and all that, you always need to kind of do variances, or some compliance, not everything's perfect, and you, and you go to a board, in this case, the Planning and Zoning, to, to ask for special things, if you will. Well, if you do this, we'll do that, you know, we realize, like with the parking, there's this problem, but we can do that, that type of thing. I gotta, I gotta tell you that, I hope, I hope that when these final, necessary, in most cases, variances are made, that you say, okay, we did this here, we have a, we have a manufacturing facility with a restaurant next to each other, and that is going to be allowed, or how many feet? If we allow it in one place, how does that impact other areas of our city? Okay, just like, you know, the school. So those are things that I just, what we don't wanna do, unfortunately, part of it's because of the culture, you know, where we, we try to, to, you know, we just do it because we want it, you know, versus, but I want us to think it through, okay? And so I ask you, from, from that, when I looked at the parking spaces also, it seemed to me, it seemed to me, and I could be wrong, but I want people to be aware of it. And again, it was part of this proposal, and it was also published in the paper, that, that they're looking to, thank goodness, they're looking to hire about seventy-five positions. And at any one time, half of them would be on duty, so you say thirty-five, forty would be on duty at any one time. Well, guess what? Those parking spaces don't seem to be accounted for in this also. So what I'm saying is, it really gets to be, you know, and I, and I wanna be wrong, and I hope I'm wrong, but I'm just looking at some of the stuff. I mean, you're looking at silos that look kind of nice on the thing, but they're, you know, they're gonna be high. I, I remember when the council had a discussion last year regarding the proposed hotel, we were concerned about, I believe the hotel was five and a half stories high, if I'm not mistaken, because that's pretty much the limit of, of, of height that you were allowed, if I recall. And surfside, I think it's thirteen or fourteen floors. So what I'm saying is, you may not have that same concern, but there may be a concern, there may not be a concern. The other thing, too, is, when we, when we learned about this last term, we knew that there was gonna have to be, and this is something I'm not familiar with, that, you know, there is the land trust, there is easements, if you will, to like the boardwalk, where people basically walk over there on the shore, that there might have to be some type of easement to where the way that the building's gonna be positioned. You know, hopefully, that will only enhance the walkability of people that wanna enjoy the boardwalk that aren't going. So those are things that we have to look for, you know, because we all want this to work, but we all have to admit it's more than a taproom. I mean, you know, it's, it's more than just dockside brewery or something like that. And, and again, it's so promising, but at the same time, what we don't wanna do is say, gee, we didn't think this, we didn't think that, because the time that we approved this, we, we were just waiting for plans, and now we're starting to see plans coming out. So I would ask you to, to please, because what happens is, in these types of, of circumstances, what you basically have is what they call, is what they call contract zoning, because of something of this importance. Just make sure the contract's gonna work for, it's gonna work for the people, as well as, as the final, the, the basic final outcome. And in terms of, the other thing that I did not see explicitly, and hopefully it's in there, is we all know that part of the, oops, that part of the plan was, they're going to put the Savannah Rock Museum or part and parcel tour in there for, for, you know, the, as another dedicated area, if you will, of the building. I don't know if it's necessary, or how is parking accommodated for that? Maybe it's not applicable, because they'll do it off-hours, but again, that's another feature that was really kind of at the time a bolt-on, it wasn't like, you know, it was like, how are we gonna do this with this, you know? So now we're starting to see those plans, so when you've got, when you guys get to see it in this coming weeks, months, hopefully whatever, I want you to please, you know, just take, and hopefully I'm wrong on most councils, or my concerns will be totally alleviated, but I think this is too important a project for West Haven, that we, we need all you guys really, you know, all hands on deck, and I, and I would, I would truly appreciate that. You know, and, and I wanna move on to another subject, if I may, and it really also deals with economic development, you know? In the paper this, this weekend, obviously, there was concerns, and from, in this case, the center district, about the business association and so forth. And yes, the downtown looks pathetic, it's embarrassing, it's an eyesore, we all know that, and we haven't pushed the ball enough, and we're doing too little, too late, and we're not communicating with the business community. The business community has basically put their hands up with members, certain members of this administration, they wanted to let you know that tonight. However, I will say, the most concerning, two concerning, well, two interesting comments in the article, one was from Derinda Bor, who basically says, you know, we don't have a point person in West Haven to really take care of economic development. When I was on the board here, we didn't really have, and we still don't have, a, a commissioner of planning and development. What we have is a director of planning, as much as we try to put development after his name, but he is a director of planning. I know it's allowed by the charter, but it's not allowed in terms of us not being able to push the, the ball forward in economic development. At the time, when I was on the council, they allowed that, and, which I thought was a mistake, and I still felt to that day, but there was also another fifty thousand dollars put aside for quote-unquote, a specialist, so as we did stuff, we would hire a specialist to do X, Y, and Z. Well, we knew that was absolutely ridiculous, because even if you go to the state of Connecticut, to go to Advanced Connecticut, and they tell you how you, what their recommendations are, and how to proceed with economic development seminars, well, you do it this way, but the West Haven does it this way, so we're not even in sync with that. So in the new budget, when you basically approved a hundred thousand dollars, I was happy to see it wasn't for specialists, but we're going to try to do it. Right now, that, it, it's, it's a department that's problematic unto itself, okay? And so, and for many reasons, but, but with that, I have to tell you that, if we don't have the right economic development, the answer is not what, what Ms. Rossi was saying. Well, you know, well, we're gonna have a chamber of commerce, and we merge with Milford, and I'm looking forward to more ribbon cuttings. Well, let me tell you, as a business person, I am a member of the Milford Chamber of Commerce, and it was West Haven, but until they got together, I'm also orange, so I know about Chamber of Commerce's, okay? And I've also served on the Chamber of Commerce as a, as a board director, okay? And the, the function, the main function of a chamber of commerce is to maintain business, is to maintain business there, and to, and to show, and showcase the city. But to grow business and to entice industry, and to entice business to come into an area, that's where you have an economic development corporation, which by the way, West Haven had one many years ago, and that stopped, or you, or you empower the Economic Development Commission, and you make sure the Planning and Zoning by, by default actually also becomes part of economic development. So, you know, doing ribbon cuttings and just hoping that other people will basically spur development in a town, it doesn't work that way, okay? And, and it just shows you the, the unfortunate lack of, of knowledge that we basically have regarding this. Because it was a shocking comment to those in the, in the industry, I, when that article came out, I had gotten a couple of calls from developers. Number one, the first one was, is, well, you know, we're not gonna do business with you guys, because they don't know what they're doing, and, and, and it's just a problem. And the other one was like, is she kidding me? Okay, so I want you to be aware of, on a very basic level, that, that it's unfortunate, a city of our size, think about this, a city of our size, fifty-five thousand people in our Chamber of Commerce was lackluster, and we're supposed to be open for business, and we all remember during the pandemic and prior to that, that, that the, at the time, the director, and I had to ask during three separate council meetings, it's in the minutes, can they please have access to their office downstairs? Can they please take their stuff? They weren't allowed access to their offices, but my point of it is, is, we've, we've always had anemic economic development, Chamber of Commerce, and, and you take a look at Milford, it's fifty-three thousand, it's thriving, it's absolutely thriving. So it's, it's problematic that, that we all too often don't realize, and look in the mirror sometimes, that we have, we, we have systemic problems in this culture, and that culture is also not being friendly to our own West Haven businesses. Not, you know, and, and to that point, just the absolute disregard and disrespect of some of the residents of West Haven, which was, had been shown at some recent meetings, which had already gone, had already been noticed, so I won't go into that. But with that, when you think of that, it made me think, because I know other people, that other meetings that I've listened in on the last month, while I was at bedside, is, you know, people talked about the Havens, and we should put the brewery there, we should do this there, we should do that there. And, and the answer always, or the general answer always seemed to be, or the belief or the default was, well, we don't own the land anymore, so, you know, we don't own the property, so we're powerless, which is not the case. It's unfortunate that, you know, when you read in the papers that, well, you know, no one's really called us, they finally picked up the phone, and you say, you know what? We had four years, and before that, you know, it was like, you know, if they don't answer you, you call again, and again. Unfortunately, what we ended up having was a combative thing with, with a developer, okay? And so with that, you know, we're, we're still kind of waiting, but we shouldn't wait, we should engage, we engage developers. And the way that we engage developers is pretty much what they do about a half an hour away from us, in Middletown. Anyone know about the, what they're doing in Middletown? I would encourage you to take a look at the Middletown waterfront development that is in progress, right? And it's a waterfront, it just happens to be ironic, a waterfront. And what they did is, they got, they got people together, they, you know, got residents together, and they, they came up with a plan, they had a professional now, not just doing a vision, because you're gonna have an occupational plan of development, which is a division, but now they're working on deliverables, they're working on a plan, and they're working the plan. And you know what? They're taking, and they're taking, in their case, it was somewhat similar, a very dormant, down-and-out shorefront, if you will, and they're talking about, they're taking a look at that, and they're talking, you know what? We wanna do walking trails in boat docks and restaurants, they actually even mentioned a microbrew, which was pretty fun. a microbrew, which was pretty funny, okay? And, and a microbrew, and, and they're talking about, you know, docking areas, they're talking about mixed use, where, you know, we don't, we know the big box stores or the Hyatt ain't there anymore, but you know what? We want to have a little retail and then have some, some mixed-use housing so they can like, look over. They're looking at, at their culture, they're looking at their quality, like, they're looking to bring in new people to drive the economy, to, to drive business. And so, you know, like it or not like it, they, they're basically looking at a recreational park, they're looking at a pedestrian bridge. What I'm saying is, they're looking, they're engaging, and they're contacting, now they have a plan, and they're contacting develop, they're contacting those people so they can work with the developer, you know? I mean, it's, it's not a bad thing, I mean, it's not one of those things that, the reason why we have an economic development and planning, uh, uh, Planning and Development Department is to be doing stuff just like that, above and beyond going to meetings to, to enforce codes. You know, you need professionals, and in terms of who is in charge of economic development, at the end of the day, it's your chief officer. That's, your, your mayor, your select person, that person every day should be eating, breathing, drinking, economic development. And right now, we're not doing that, okay? We're not doing that. We're not marketing the city, okay? Matter of fact, we are, under what we've gone through so far, given the, the ill-managed, lack of operating procedures, corruption, toxicity that we've all gone through, um, they're like, you know what? I'm keeping this to the side because, huh, right now, I mean, as it is, building materials are high, and now it's just like, you know, what's, what's the rush? Let's just, let's just let things change. But, but with that, I, I do want to, I do want to thank you for your time. I, I hope that you take this with all good, all good support. I thank you all for your good work, I know it isn't easy, you have a very tough term. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Barry. Mr. O'Brien?
Oh.
Well, it's going to take you a while.
Everyone else.
Oh, it's just dead.
Go quick, right?
It's just dead.
Okay, I would like to say, um, after Barry, that I did eat and breathe economic development.
Name it, Ed.
Ed O'Brien, Thirty-Sixth Platte Avenue, West Haven. Um, I was in East Haven two weeks ago. A guy comes up to me, a developer, and said that he wanted to purchase the debonair, the piece of property next to it, and then across the street, the bait shop. He said he had plans drawn up, they approached the city, nobody called him back. They waited a few, a month, two months, they, they kept trying, they finally abandoned the property, or the, uh, project. They'd never moved ahead with the sale, that was literally two weeks ago. So I think Barry's right, you have to engage economic development. It is, you know, the mayor is the chief architect of the city. What I really wanted to speak about is the article in the paper this week. When I was a merchant down in the center, probably two thousand and five, two thousand and six, a lot of us got together, and we tried to change the, um, you know, people coming down the center, the look of the center, the vibe of the center, and started to program the center. And Tony Inzero, along with Leslie Jewellers, Cameo Cleaners, the West Haven Voice, myself, Goldworks, um, Mario and Josephs, we got together and got this farmer's market. We got, we hooked up with the state to bring the farmer's market into West Haven once a week to bring people into the downtown, because ultimately, that's what you want in your downtown, is to bring people in. I mean, I think somebody should check with the mayor and find out who made the decision to move that out. It's, it's, it is an absolute disrespect to the merchants that put that together and worked so hard. It's, it's called Tony Inzero Flower Fair, because Tony was the president of the merchant association, worked so hard, and then I followed up, and Gene Sullivan followed up, and we, we worked very hard at that. So that was when I was a merchant, to bring people and program the center. Now, fast forward, I'm the mayor, I meet with UNH, I meet with Professor Haynes, and we formed the Mayor's Advisory Commission. We developed the West Fest, to bring those students in the population from UNH here to the center, again, to bring people down. So now we have the West Fest, we have the farmer's market, we had food trucks out there. That again, got moved out. Why would, why would a small business owner come to West Haven? If you're a large developer, you don't get phone calls back. If you're a small merchant where you're renting a storefront, and you have a, a retail store or a shop, or what you want in your downtown, you, you're not supported by the, the city. In fact, you're harmed by the city by moving out things that bring people. What downtown doesn't have festivals on their green? So a, as the council, did you feel any responsibility to ask the mayor how that happened, and maybe try and move that stuff back? I've been down to the farmer's market, they aren't happy down there. The farmers say that, that they don't, they're, they're not as busy as when they were in the center. They don't like being there, the food trucks aren't near them. So again, um, I, I would stand here and ask that you guys try and do something. And my final thing is, we're on review from Moody's. Where's the mayor? Again, does it bother you guys? You're taking the heat from residents, we have residents here, and, and where's the mayor? She's not here to, to hear, I mean, she has thirty days, there's not another meeting. An audit, Scott Jackson is here, Moody's and your bond rating is forward-looking. So why can't we just give them the information they need? So that's it. Again, um, I think it's important that she's here, but I also think it's important that you act as the mayors of your respective districts. You're not working for the mayor, you're working for us, the people. And Sarah, the third district, is, is the city council, or the, um, the center, is in your district. They just harmed your district. So again, why, why would anybody come here? I, I, it's, it just flies in the face of everything that we tried to, to fix and, and work on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. O'Brien.
My name is Christine Sullivan-Gallo, Fifty-two Richmond Avenue, and I am the chair of the Economic Development Commission, such as we are. And I was going to speak a little on the Haven, I'm going to cut that and leave that for next time, because I don't want to keep everybody here even longer. And, uh, after what other people have said, what Barry has said, what Ed O'Brien has said, I'm just going to go right to the third thing I was going to talk about was, which is what we have tried to do, and the little bit of the history of the commission since I've been on it, which is the Richard Borer administration. We have had turnover like you wouldn't believe, because people get disgusted and leave because they say, "We don't accomplish anything." And, uh, we just lost one of our commissioners a few weeks ago, we are now down to four. We're supposed to have seven, five and two alternates. We've had three people whose names have been in, their resumes have been in for at least, one of them, I think, almost two years, and none of these people have, I don't think any of them have been sent to you to approve. And whenever we say, "Could we please get some people, we're in quorum, we have to cancel meetings," uh, we're told either nothing, or we're told, "I'm busy," or "I'll handle it later." So we have to deal with all this kind of thing. The next thing, what I was asked to bring up by the commission is our budget. Now, I've called some other municipalities, trying to find out what their economic development commissions have as a budget, if they have a budget. And, um, Derby doesn't really have an economic development commission, they have a, um, a group that does culture, that would do marketing and branding, and then they have a fellow who auctions off properties, he considers himself economic development. They just come under the mayor's office, and I guess that it all gets paid from there. Cheshire has, uh, an economic development with seven members, the two alternates, five members like we have, they have a fourteen thousand dollar a year budget. I couldn't get East Haven, I guess they don't even meet, they're like a puppet group over there. However, our budget is zero. Now, we've been asked to take care of branding and marketing, which is exactly what people have been talking about. We were asked that by the former, uh, Planning and Zoning Head, and we are under Planning and Zoning. For all the years that I've been on it, Planning and Zoning ran our meetings. We just would sit there, Planning and Zoning would stand here and say, "This is what we're doing, this is what A-Hold's doing, this is what they're doing, this is what the Havens do, and this is what this is doing, okay, bye." And we would go and talk in the elevator about all the great ideas we had. In twenty-twenty, when we were reconstituted, because we hadn't met for a while, and we didn't have, we had two people left, Skip Foss and myself, we're the only people left, we came together, and we were allowed to run our own meetings. We started meeting twice a month, we came in hot. So what were we going to do? First thing, we were working with our state reps to do something about the railroad bridges, like the one next to the Duchess Dineront, which looks like something out of Chernobyl. And, um, we were going to either get them sandblasted, covered, like Milford has a plaque over theirs. We were also working on plantings, hanging baskets for a couple of blocks downtown, to start to pick that up. I did talk to some of the people down there, and I was told, "We're not going to put any flowers out down here, because people knock them over." I said, "Well, these will be up in the air." "Oh, they're just going to knock them over." I thought, "We have lemurs and marmosets coming down the street that are going to knock these things down?" But they were not having it. So it was going to be hard to do this, because we were working with Advanced Connecticut and the Connecticut Council of Municipalities on that, and they said Farmington had the city merchants, they paid for the baskets, and we'll have Farmington get in touch with you and say how it was done. I could see we were going to have a little, real level of pushback here, but we were going to do it. And banners. The Freedom Ring banners are getting a little older, uh, they're not bad, they're up with zip ties, I notice now, but we were going, we were looking into, we talked to Public Works, when can we have them up? We were going to have something that maybe could go with those. Eleanor Slamba, who's one of our commissioners, was going to work with the art, uh, groups to maybe do a, a lighthouse scene with a new, our new slogan on there. And COVID shut all of this down. We were going to do fundraising for this, because we have no budget. COVID shut it all down. Lo and behold, and this is a little aside, but it, I think it's a point that has to be made, the banners went up for the Centennial, and I called the mayor's office, and I said, "How did those banners get up there?" We have it in our minutes, and Public Works knew, we were working on the banners. Well, the Centennial Commission did that, uh, the committee, and they don't read your minutes, and they didn't talk to Public Works. If they want to do it, great, that takes it off of our hands. However, where are those banners now? We could have suggested you put Centennial down at the bottom, so they could have been used more than one year. So where are they? Total waste of money. They looked nice last year, if you knew it was a hundred and not seven hundred, but, uh, now they're gone. So this is the kind of duplication of effort and giving unilateral power to one person to do whatever that committee then did down for that, those banners. Now we're having trouble with the banners, what, UNH wants to put some banners up, um, Ms. Weinstein, um, has offered to give more money to put banners up. I don't think they want to pay enough for the banners, and I really don't want to see a bunch of banners that just say, "UNH, UNH, UNH" down there. It's one thing if they put up one that says, "UNH donated these banners," or it says, "UNH" on the bottom, but to just have a bunch of banners that say, "UNH," and I don't know what they would say, but it's just like we're selling out and advertising. Now, um, as far as, um, talking about this duplication of effort, we are also working with, we were working with the Beautification Commission to get plantings in the hanging baskets in different areas. And now, there's, um, a person named Hunter Naesby, and he is working with City Hall. He showed up at our meeting, and he's, he works with, I think it's called Shoreline Sustainable. He is doing an Adopt a Spot, um, program, where people will be able to buy these traffic islands that look terrible, and start fixing those up and planting them. So we had him get in touch with Public Works, and also with Erin from the Beautification Commission, because she has the list of a lot of these places, and we didn't want them at cross purposes. Well, now it's come up that, what, Mr. Chiarelli is going to do, what, pocket parks? I wouldn't think most of the adopt a spots and the pocket parks are going to overlap. However, I can think of a few, like the Lions Handicap seating area, that could be considered both a pocket park and is already on the adopt a spot list. So again, who's watching out to make sure that these things are not overlapping? At this point, we were able to catch it, but otherwise, I don't know. It's, it's, this person's doing it, this person's doing it, this person's doing it. Now, um, the final thing is, what are we accomplishing with zero dollars? Well, we, we will go into stores and things, give them our card, tell them if you want to talk, if you want to, if you have ideas, you have issues, let us know, so they know somebody in the city, the small businesses know there's somebody there. And also, we have written articles, the hidden gems in the articles that highlight small business in The Voice. And now, we are going to have an online presence, we have a volunteer who is branding and marketing for a subsidiary of Delta Airlines, who has just moved to West Haven and has volunteered his expertise to help us have an online presence that uses the algorithm so that when people hit farmer's market, and right now, when you hit farmer's market, ours does not show up at all, one of the vendors complained about that to me. New Haven comes up, orange, but not ours, it's not even listed. So that won't happen. You hit farmer's market, West Haven's going to come up, and he knows the algorithms to get us to be, get the, the most hits. He said, "Within a weekend, he could get us to move up there." So we're doing that. Otherwise, we still don't have the budget. Now, the former, um, P and Z had mentioned something to us before he left about, "I'm thinking of giving you like ten thousand dollars." I don't know where that was going to come from. However, if we say, "Okay, we'll just fundraise," we've been told by, um, the Chamber of Commerce that they can work with us and get us maybe a couple thousand if we need it with fundraising, we don't have anywhere to put that money. At this point, it goes in my purse, and then goes where? We asked for a line item in the budget, and after months, the, I was called by the mayor's office and told, "I don't really understand this, Chris, but they don't have room to put another item on the budget, so you guys can't have your own budget." Which means our money, I guess, goes into, subsumes into planning and zoning, and somebody keeps a Post-it note that says, "Plan, EDC has a hundred bucks in here." So that is, that's what we are dealing with, and I have an incredible group of people who are very interested, we're volunteers, we're showing up every month when we get our quorum, to do this, and we're really not being supported. And, uh, but we are trying, and everybody is welcome to come to our meetings, which are the second Wednesday of every month. The only, oh, and Barry was, Barry Combe was our liaison from the council. We don't have a liaison from the council now, so we need a liaison. So anyone who is, uh, would like to work with economic development, we do need somebody. The last thing I'm going to say today is about the Arts Center. We discussed this, and basically, I don't know where it stands right now. It seems to be, is it, is it even on the table anymore? Is it an arts center, community arts center, or is it an arts center slash community center? I know a lot of people said, "We don't want an arts center, we don't need an arts center, it's unsafe down there." That's not an imprimatur to put a community center in there. They don't want a community center either, they don't want the money being spent, they're not going to go down there and think a community center is any safer than going to see a musical or something. The Chamber of Commerce has said, "Community centers will take money out of your town, arts centers will put money into your town." And from what I understand, and I'm not going to belabor this, because I'm not the expert, but I do know that arts people, I've been told, will not be interested if there are, is not the sound, the lighting, the sprung dance floors, what they need. To make this plain vanilla space, we're going to be stuck with a plain vanilla elephant. And Eleanor Slamba has a one-hour presentation that can show how an arts center can be self-sustaining, and I know that Councilwoman Borges has taped it, when she presented it to arts people, and I would really urge all of you, before you make any vote on that, to look at that presentation, because it would be irresponsible not to. Okay? And I guess that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Tom Cosa, Thirty-four May Street. I came up to take a couple of swipes at the Tom McCarthy pinata tonight. So what I am asking is for the council's help. I'm specifically... I'm specifically asking councilmen from Second District and Third District, Second District and Third District, to help. Because this pothole issue on Second Ave is out of control. I have 26 pictures of potholes from May Street all the way up to by the Volunteer Fire Department. They range anywhere from 60, I have a, I have tape measure next to them. They range anywhere from 16 inches long to 84 inches long to four to five inches deep. It's just not pavement that's, that's shown in these potholes. There's gravel, which means it's all the way down through whatever pavement was there. I've come to this, I've come to this, these meetings countless of times over the last number of months, whether she's here or not, that's supposed to be her campaign manager, Public Works person. She's sitting there writing. I don't know if she's doing a cross puzzle, word search, I have no idea. But I would think that she knows him. He works for her. That maybe, somewhere along the line, out of some of those little, that she would say something to him, "Hey, can you check out Second Ave?" So Mayor, if you are watching tonight, I'm asking you to please, please do something about the potholes on Second Ave. Tom McCarthy, please do something about the potholes on Second Ave. My number is 203-980-4652. I'm tired. I spend seven, over $7,000 in taxes every year here. That's to include my, my, my car taxes. I hit those potholes every day. I go to work at 7:00 in the morning, at 7:30 in the morning. I look like I'm drunk because I have to go onto the other side. So I'm sure a lot of you have gone down that section of Second Ave. And I know what you went through just trying to get your stuff cleared up down by Beach Ave. It's atrocious. Like, like they were saying, the simple things, simple things. I've always said, "Do what the city needs first, not what they want." You know what the city needs? You know what your residents need there on Second Ave? They need them filled. I know they're doing construction. I know they're doing the gas lines. But Jesus, it, I don't care how much money it takes. I don't give a hoot if it takes $500 or $10,000 to fill those potholes. I know some of you think it's a waste of money. I don't know when they're gonna be done with this construction. I'm tired of it. I gotta get a front-end alignment. Who do I send the bill to? All right? Over $7,000 in taxes and I gotta run through a minefield. I've said it once and I'll say it again. I drove through Afghanistan and I've driven on roads better than that. This is, it's ridiculous. And if you think I'm the only one that thinks about this, you're wrong. We're tired of it. Do I have to go up and down the street to get a petition of every resident between May Ave, on May Street and up to the, up to the Volunteer Fire Department to say, "Please do something about it"? So the fact that I come here and I'm talking right to the top and nothing gets done, help me. Somebody on the council, help us on Second Ave. My car is getting destroyed. My other car is getting destroyed. God forbid if two cars come down that section at the same time. You have a choice, either you're gonna hit the car that's coming by you or you're going right into a pothole. And I'm tired of hitting potholes. And I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room that feels, and I know it's just not Second Ave, I know it's other sections of the city, but this is my la, this is my last time up here because I don't know what to do anymore. Do I have to take legal action? I have no idea. I can't afford that. I'm tired of it. So please, I'm asking, the residents in your districts are asking, "Please take care of this problem." I've went to the news with it. I, I guess they seem not important enough that there's a couple of potholes in the road. But I invited them down to come and take a look at it. I hope that they answer. I don't want to have to be the one that has to go out there and buy stuff to put into these potholes. Because again, like I said, I pay over seven grand in taxes. It's not my job. That is Public Works' job. And the run, the person that runs Public Works isn't doing the job. And the one who's in charge of that person isn't doing her job.
Right. That's true.
Yes, this is just about potholes. Strangely enough, sorry, gentleman says about, about going, going, oh, parks, how atrocious they look. Well, to get to those parks, to get to these places, the softball fields, you gotta take a road. God forbid anybody go down Second Ave. And I'll hop on that too, about the, the, what, the skate park? Is that really a skate park? It's nothing but a piece of trash. One of the first things people see when they pull in from First Ave or Second Ave, besides the empty spot of Captain's Galley, you see that atrocious skate park that we had to have for the community. If anybody's driven by there, there's still a chair that's been sitting there since wintertime. I've never seen any Public Works there cleaning any of that stuff up. There's graffiti all over the place. My daughter likes to do skateboarding. I don't trust to take her down there. So again, I didn't mean to get off track about, about the skate park. But it's my freaking taxes should, I should not have to be driving over these potholes or into these potholes and out of them. And neither should my family. And neither should any of these residents. Please, I, I'm begging anybody here on the board that may know somebody, because if I have to fill them, it's not gonna be good. Because I know what happened when, when you had volunteers, you, you had Public Works with all up in arms. Well, you know what? Then get your boss to do his damn job. Tired. I appreciate everything you do. And again, I know you can't do anything. And I've said before, you're up here taking the brunt of everybody's rage. But please, please stand together somehow, some way and get this stuff done. Thank you. I appreciate everything you, thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Rock. Good to see you. Haven't seen you in a while. Boy, I feel sorry for you. Wow, that's a lot of yelling. I can't top that. There's a couple of issues I wanted to bring up, and I'll try to make it short and sweet. The one is the Allentown Library that was sold, never replaced. I want to know what happened to the money that it was sold for, where it went. I'm gonna FOI it, get it in writing, we'll be here Friday. Because that money should've been saved, put aside for a new library. Allentown does not have a library. We lost our library, our senior center, our rec center. It's all gone. We have nowhere to go. Our children have nowhere to go. And you want to know why they end up on the street, getting in the trouble or getting hit by cars? Because the city of West Haven sold their rec center, their library, their senior center and have not replaced it. Not only did you sell the, the, the library, you sold the parking lot to the firehouse. They got nowhere to park their regular cars. We have nowhere to park them and go to a commissioner's meeting. It's absurd. And nobody's replaced anything. So you got rid of everything at Allentown, kept your nice library down here. You know, kept your nice rec center down here. But don't worry about Allentown. Down the North End, they don't, they don't matter. Well, I'm here to tell you they do. And we're gonna do something about it. We want to know where every dime of that library money went to. And we want to know what the plans are for a new one. I'm tired of hearing, "Oh, we're working on it, working on it, working on it." Because I know you ain't. And so do the people at Allentown. They're getting tired of being just lied to and conned. Eventually, every resident's gonna say, "To hell with paying taxes. You're all on a free ride." Well, you aren't, but the city is, these employees and, and, if you want to call them a mayor, you know, it's a free ride. You sold everything out from under us and spent the money. We want to know where it is. And we're gonna FOI it on a legal document and we're gonna get it in writing, where every dollar went to. And I don't think you're gonna have that information. And I do think I'm gonna need you using attorney. So, the other issue was, that really gets to me. Oh, the aquarium that they were talking about a while ago. I heard that got shot down because somebody didn't want it on West Shore. They wanted it, or on the water side of town, they want, put it in Allentown. An aquarium don't belong in Allentown. It belongs near the water. And I would've loved to have an aquarium. I know a lot of people would come to see it. That would've been beautiful, but to not put it by the water? Whoever thought of that was not, doesn't think. Ain't using any common sense. We need this board to start using common sense and start thinking about West Haven. Not about your pockets, not about somebody else's pocket, and not about doing what you're told to do by some other big-paid politician. Just do what you were elected to do, which is good for the people. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Ma'am?
Yep.
I think Kamala was gonna talk, but my name is Selvina Peta and living at 58 West Wall. I'm not go over there because I cannot reach, so that's. I'm gonna blame all of you. It seems like you don't think of what the people like. You go for the senior center and we didn't get the senior center. While we were talking about the senior center and thinking that we were gonna get it, a school sold for a hundred and some thousand dollars, that it would've been perfect to do a community center. None of you knew that the school was being sold, that it could accommodate a community center with a senior center for $100,000? For crying out loud, a shed costs is more than that. So that's the first thing, and we didn't get the senior center or a community center. The brewery, you don't listen to the people. They don't want the brewery on the, on the boardwalk. It's up to the community development, whatever, to negotiate with the owner of where the haven was supposed to be. And bring the brewery there. Don't put it on the boardwalk. It's, it's not right. You're not supposed to just stop because the mayor wants it, the mayor gets it. You gotta also do what the people want. On the boardwalk, talking about what, two years ago, they cut down all the trees. They were gonna put more trees. Go and look at the boardwalk and see what you see. All in a, it's a mess. You have sumac trees on one bunch, nothing on the other bunch of land, whatever, all the weeds that come through the fence. It's a shame. And the garbage pail, if you go over a weekend on Sunday or Monday, Saturday, you find that the garbage pails overflow everywhere there. So as we get, we, I keep talking about that, check what these people are doing, if they're doing their jobs. The Lake Street, which I don't even know where it is, since when they're trying to complain about the overflow, the erosion, that, that needs to, only to be drenched and it will solve the problem. And they're not doing it. That, I don't know what this, whatever, the community, the McCarthy, his job. So that's all I say. Think of what the people want, not only what the mayor wants and what is good for the people. That's all. Thank you.
Guy in back.
I've been coming to the last couple ones. It's a little tight in there. I don't know why you guys got it jammed over here. We gotta kick people out of the way. Tom Strappa, 327 Washington Avenue. I always come and say I'm the old guy working that's retired in West Haven. I want to tell you guys something. I was a big boss where I used to work. I actually was. I don't tell people, but I, I really was. I thought I had a tough job. Holy moly. I'm proud and respectful of each one of you good people because you've been taking a beat for the last year or so, right? I learned something from a boss of mine, came from the Marines. The departments weren't clean enough. They weren't up to snuff. Because I was one of the bigger guys, he grabbed me in front of everybody. He says, picks up a cigarette butt off the floor. The whole department stopped when he did it to. He says, "Tom, you know why it's like this?" I said, "No, Bob, why?" He said, "Because you permit it. That's why it's like this." He goes, "If you don't permit it, it will not happen." After that, we had, we got rated in, I don't want to use the name of the company, the cleanest department in the entire company because I just didn't permit it. So all I want to give you is one thing to say. You gotta, you gotta dig your heels. I know Husky did it a couple of times. He made me proud. You did it a couple of times. Actually, a couple of you people did it. The police chief I'm, I'm happy with. You just gotta dig your heels in and say, "This is what I want." The next time they talk to you, whether it's about your kid's shoes or buying a Cadillac, I asked you for something, where is it? Well, what, what about the Cadillac? And you do that once or twice, you know what you, when you come, you're gonna get exactly what you asked for because they know you're not gonna permit not having it done. All right? Second thing, potholes. He did so good, I can't even say, but I'm gonna tell you something. I know a truck comes by my house five times a day and they collect bags of leaves. Why don't you take one of those dump trucks, fill it up with cold patch and just tell the guys, "Ride around and fill any holes you see." That's what they do in Norfolk and Stratford. Right? I mean, is that be too much common sense? You wouldn't even be spending more money because cold patch is cheap. The guys are there anyway. They're riding around, "Oh, bag." Now they gotta do shovel. That's it. Cold patch. And the more the cars run over it, the better. Compliment to you. After I bitched about two meetings ago, I think it was three meetings ago, and I apologized, I noticed there's less blight in West Haven. I, I, I don't know if you'd ask the police officers to get it done or get on top of it. I see it starting to come back a little bit with tires all around. And, and I mean, for weeks and weeks and weeks, the tires are just sitting on the side of the road. Thinking to myself, "Wait a minute, it was getting better." And now, so I, please, whatever you did before, just please do it again because it worked. I actually seen the difference. So all I have to say is, I love you. I don't know what to tell you. You guys are doing the best you can, I know. Just don't permit it. That's it. Believe me.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Weinstein.
It's, it's not happy, it's not happy time coming to these meetings. Just finding out about the economic development, two things came to mind. Two meetings ago, we offered double what UNH offered for those banners. We, we had a conversation with Lee, offered to make them like lighthouses and in little letters on the bottom, "Star tires plus wheels." We offered double and even a caveat saying, "If UNH wants to go in, we'll go up to two grand for half of them. Then you'll get four grand instead of three grand," which was gonna be in lieu of $1,500. Lee turned and says, "Give us a proposal in writing." The next day, it was on his desk. Have we heard? Not a word.
I got withdrawn. This is terrible.
Not a word. Which reminded me of a whole email thread that I have here. It goes back to 2020. I offered to do anything for the city. I offered to do anything for the city. A gentleman named Marcin Stankovich gave me ethics forms and wanted resumes. He had it the next day. Mutual emails back and forth. An email from Nancy. Dear Mr. Weinstein, thank you for your continued interest in West Haven. The city's already conducting a parking study. Do you have an interest in a specific border commission? Please advise. Um, it took eight months to get to that point, but the next day, I sent her a response. Thank you for your quick response. Paige and I are interested in economic development. We have openings. You have my resume, you have my ethics forms. I've had numerous conversations with this Marcin, with the mayor, with Luis Esposito. Nothing. We offer to help. And this, this city needs help. Nothing. The last conversation, 32821, a year and a half ago. It'd be nice to not be the focal point in all the newspapers. West Haven official approves contracts and payments for his family business. Amid criticism, West Haven rethinks power of city ethics boards. Let me, let me read a little bit of the article. Robert Bruno, chairman of West Shore Fire District Board of Commissioners for the last three years, said he was honored to be reappointed by his fellow commissioners Thursday. This is dated 7/16.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Excuse me. No names.
No names, okay? Well, I, okay?
No names, please.
Alright. The insurance documents submitted to have work done on vehicles for the city show the name of a garage. We paid fifteen hundred dollars a month to the garage owner's son. I don't see his name on the insurance papers. God forbid, he puts something in wrong and there's a catastrophic accident. Is the insurance company gonna pay? We paid an individual, not a company. I know I'm not getting answers on this, but maybe Marb can get an answer. Um, maybe a reporter can get an answer. We had explosions last week in West Haven. In a residential neighborhood. And nobody knew what was going on. How simple would it be to make a reverse 911 call to the residents to not scare the the Jesus out of them? I mean, nobody thinks in this town, nobody has respect for, for the citizens. That was terrible. Andrew Brown, a reporter for, um, Connecticut Mirror, tweeted last week. Earlier this year, a West Haven official shared an email announcing an abuse of the city's credit card. So, I filed a FOIA for the credit card statements. Instead of providing me with the records, the city is now paying, with our tax dollars, I, I, I inserted that, is now paying a law firm to fight my request at the state FOI Commission. Our mayor, when she was on this council, was the queen of FOIA. She got documents, she requested documents, she made it happen. And now she's the obstructionist of FOIA. We had a lady in here who poured her heart out, spent years trying to get information. This city is run so poorly. There's, there's no regard for the citizens. And to spend our tax money to fight FOIA requests? That should not be allowed by you guys. Stand up. Maybe there's a hero on this council who will get those credit card statements and make them public. That would be something. That's all for tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Weinstein.
Good evening. Jim Donigan, 127 Baldwin Street, West Haven, 9th District. City bylaws and the city charter. Have each and every one of you read it? I've read it three times. Okay? And I come to the part where it's the code of ethics. And I'm getting text messages from people, West Virginia, as far as way as California, about that news article last week about a council member who's also a fire commissioner, who should have excused himself from anything that had to do with his business. The way I look at it is, if you are council member or commissioner, you have an inside knowledge as to what bids have been received, or what bids have not been received. So, with no bids being received, by you submitting a bid under your own company, that's like insider trading. That's illegal. Stockbrokers go to jail for that. Should have reclusive himself immediately from that. And there was another member on there too, probably should have. Okay? And then the checks are being issued not to the company that got the bid, but to an individual. Was there a 1099 issued? Was there a W9 filled out? As Andy said, was there insurance? No. Not to my knowledge. Um, basically, and then what happens is, you come up here, Andy, Paige, Steve, we all come up, we have concerns about the city. Me, I voiced my concerns about the city. I reposted an article by the Connecticut Mirror on Facebook, week ago Friday. And I met with threatening texts. Uh, harassment. It's all on my phone. And intimidation. Threats to come to my job, to embarrass me, to humiliate me, to shut my mouth. And the council member's name was mentioned in the first text, which the police have. The police have now opened an investigation. This is how our council members operate? I'm mad. I'm very mad. Alright? You should be governing each other. You should all know what the city charter states. If you violate it, you should immediately submit your resignation. You should immediately be investigated for illegal act, because you have made a serious personal gain. Not only you, not only your company, but your family members. Illegal. One hundred percent. Now, I know I'm gonna be getting more threatening text messages. I keep everything for years. My job, I've got my first text message from 10 years ago. I keep everything. Alright? I'm letting everybody know. This is what happens when you decide to speak up against a new regiment of West Haven. We're not in a movie, folks. We are not in a movie. This is not a gangster movie. I don't play the game. You're gonna threaten me? You're gonna threaten my family? Bring it on. But this isn't what you're elected to do. I'm mad. I'm very mad. Alright? If anybody wants to see it, I will show them. Okay? So, I'm very upset over this, and you should all read the city charter. And Madam Mayor, you are to address it with the council also. Corporate council, shame on you for not addressing it with the council. Shame on each and every one of yous for not reading the charter. Why did I read it three times? I'm not even a council member, but I know it forward backward. Should take a test before you even go for office. So, put yourselves in all our shoes. People wanna make a comment, make things right, we love the city we live in, we're embarrassed, and now all of a sudden you're gonna threaten us, intimidate us, harass us. We're gonna bring up the skeletons in your closet, Mr. Donigan. Bring them up. Bring them up. It's in my text message, if anybody wants to see them, I will show them. That's all I have to say, folks. For the ones who are doing it right, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it. For the ones who are doing it wrong, and you know who you are, resign.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Charlie? I use the podium. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron Charlie, 146 Union Ave. I'm gonna skip a couple of things I was gonna say. Uh, I don't know if we were still on the public hearing for the map. I don't think we ever left that, but I, I talked to a registrar of voters last week, and typically, these maps are done by a, a company whose business is to do maps. Uh, in the past, we've used companies to do so, but this time, for some reason, we kept it in-house on the council. And, and I talked to the registrar, and she was saying the mess this is gonna cause for our voters in this town. Not only that, but I, I see clear examples of gerrymandering in this map. I, I, I plotted where certain council people live, and we drew lines around their houses. We're protecting this council on this map, instead of drawing a map that's better for West Haven. That's it on that. Last week, as some of you know, we had an explosion at the Haven. An explosion that was heard all the way out to Branford. It shook houses in my area. I heard one of the explosions, I don't, there was four explosions, I don't know which one I heard. But it was loud, the one I heard. Bri- Brian, I, I, Brian Zahn, who referred the register, was making phone calls. I know Representative Delora was making phone calls. I knew Luis Esposito was making phone calls. In the article, we have no idea who caused this. Who was there at the Haven that day? It wasn't RPD. We don't know which PD. We thought it was New Haven or Stanford, but New Haven and Stanford have both denied it was their officers there. Why aren't we not asking the Haven who they let in there that day? What did they use? They blew a hole in the side of a house. What were they doing? How do we stop this in the future? Any training that occurs there, RPD should be notified. Who's there and what they're gonna do. Our residents should get reverse 911. It should be over our websites and all over social media as to what's gonna be occurring at the Haven and when. So, that way, they don't have to deal with stuff like this. One, they should never be dealing with explosions. It's a residential neighborhood. I know people over in, uh, the cove on the other side, Morris Cove, they were calling in New Haven, thinking there was an explosion on that side. There were other calls in New Haven coming in on this. Why should my residents keep, why should our residents keep putting up with this? Where is the Haven? Like, we should be making a call to the Haven, finding out who these people were. Also, when are these buildings coming down? Thank you, Councilwoman Acquari, for showing that emotion at the last meeting. It was well over a month ago, I think it was like a month and a half ago, Corp Council stood up here and said, it was imminent, those buildings were coming down, and he said days. Well, those days have turned into weeks. Those weeks are turning into months. What are we doing? What is the timeline over there? I would love to have, like, I always come up here and offer to have a neighborhood meeting over there. I will go knock doors, I'll make a flyer drop like I did when I was a council person, and get people to show up for a meeting. Get the developer there, get the mayor there, to talk to the residents. They have a lot of concerns. Regarding the parks, I don't understand why we're looking at creating more pocket parks and bidding up playground equipment when our current parks aren't maintained and our playground equipment is 20, 30 years old. Go look at Third Ave Park. That playground equipment is at least 20 years old. Go look at Morris. It's just a swing set in brush. That's all it is over there. What do we have for our neighborhoods over there? That, it, it, it seems like this area of town has been totally forgotten. Just walk around. I walked around Morris yesterday. I went to the skate park. There was a coffee maker sitting in there underneath the ramps there. It looks like someone was living underneath one of the ramps over there. It looks like it hasn't been swept, kept up at all in years. We walked around the fields, the dumping going on in the woods over there. The gates aren't locked. We have all these gates in this town that are never locked. But like, Morris Park is perfect for ARPA money. I would also say Third Ave Park is also great to put a playground equipment there, sorry, Ralph Eberly Park is perfect to put playground equipment there too. But Morris Park, we could do bigger stuff. When I was on here, I thought that was a perfect location for a splash pad. I still do. Those ball fields are so neglected. Just go walk around there. It, it just, like, Milford put a million dollars in Eisenhower Park like two years ago, and you could tell. It's the jewel of their town, their park up there. Their splash pad, their pickup ball court, the tennis courts up there. They did new parking up there. It's a gorgeous park. They did a new dog park up there. It's gorgeous. Morris Park could be our jewel. Another thing at the last council meeting that I found funny, but Melly's not here, is asking about First Ave. The section that was razed. I don't know who drove down that road, but there, it's a roller coaster. The boulder dash would be jealous how many up and down there on that stretch of road that was just razed. I don't know what engineer looked at that and said, there isn't settling. Regarding our finances, I just, I wanna thank Bridget for, at the last meeting, asked the, the, the boat engine. Like, why are we getting these invoices so late? This is the, we have to change the way we do business as usual. Marb's been pushing this, change our business as usual, but we keep doing it as usual. I really think Marb has to come in here with boots on the ground as quickly as possible. I don't know why they're, like, they're, it's months before they get someone in here to take care of our finances. But one good thing about Marb is now they get these new munis reports that we never saw as council people when I was on here. And I see on here stuff like uh, Savarock Conference Center. It's not budgeted in your budget. But yeah, it's costing taxpayers, or it's costing the city twenty-four thousand dollars. How is that not a budgeted item? There's another item here that I have questions about. It's called the proposed train station site development. What is that? The residents, if we're having a, if we're developing on the train station, the residents should have a say. And just one last thing. I, I just wanna thank Paula for coming up here earlier. I, I, it's brave for her. I had, when, after that article ran in the Register, I got phone calls, text messages, emails, Facebook messages. I got stopped by women talking about this issue about Roe. And the, the stories they told me. And they're, they're, they're afraid to share those stories. But they're, but like, I know Paula, what she came up with was incredibly brave. I don't think it was a waste of time. I know some of you might think it's a waste of time to vote on something like your opinion on the overturning of Roe. I do not. You guys were brave enough. You had the courage enough to declare racism a public health crisis. Taking away reproductive rights is a public health crisis. You guys could weigh in. Taking away reproductive rights is a public health crisis. You guys could weigh in. Other towns have an "R." There are other issues we could weigh in on too. And that's why I have a resolution. I drafted it, which is mirrored exactly after Westport's. It's easy. It's simple. Resolved, the city, the West Haven City Council supports the constitutional rights and principles established in Roe v. Wade and opposes the elimination of those rights by the Supreme Court and Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization at L. It'll take 30 seconds at the end of the meeting for someone to read that and take a vote. You guys could do the rest of your business. We, you, I know you guys have very important business, but you could also weigh in on this issue. And I will, I printed out a whole bunch of copies of those. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Charny. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in public com-
Well, this meeting was depressing. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Silvana Pacella, 281 Highland Avenue. I'm so sad right now. Like, tonight's meeting, like, really, really deflated me. I can imagine how you guys feel. Um, where's the freaking mayor? Where is she? Like, this is so irritating. I, I feel like the city has really, really gotten worse over the past couple of years. She won't resign. I get it. Maybe her ego, but she's not showing up anymore. So, I mean, who's running the city? She's still running the city? I, I just, I don't understand. And, and Tom McCarthy, I, I think it's time for you guys to ask him to come in front of, in front of you all and, and give a report on, on a maintenance schedule, on, you know, on a work list, something for the constituents because we, every, every meeting is complaint after complaint after complaint after complaint. At least some people can get some kind of idea of what he's up against. If he's up against something that's hindering him to do a job that, you know, he was hired to do. The gentleman mentioned that, that it seemed like the city was getting better. I, I kind of noticed it too because I said, oh, finally, there's, there's, um, our, our, um, city trucks cutting four-foot-high grass on, um, on rail, on Railroad Avenue, right? Within two weeks before that, I saw a toilet was dumped on the right and a grill was dumped on the left. But then the grass grew, kept growing because nobody was maintaining it and when the city came by with their vehicle, they sliced that toilet right in half. So, I can imagine the damage that was done to that, to that car or that truck. Pedestrian safety. I, I, I know that, um, that ARPA is paying around the schools and they're trying to promote, um, they're trying to promote, um, walking to school and reducing reliance on buses and cars, but they're only putting sidewalks like around an area of the school. All these kids are coming from different neighborhoods. Sometimes they miss the bus and they have to walk on very busy streets. Um, I'm going to bring up Allen, um, Allen Crossing again because it, it links, it links Shingle Hill Park. It links all these grocery. It links Walmart. It, it links, um, Texas Roadhouse. It links the basketball, the new basketball courts in the 7th District. And the sidewalk, and it would be great to have sidewalks that go all the way and really make the city walkable. Um, even Pla- even Pla Avenue, sections of Pla Avenue, all the way down to Valero. That, that should be a safe, walkable, um, road. And it's, and it's not. Uh, Pla into, and, and West Main. So, I don't know if, if you guys have a liaison with, um, the DOT or MTA and if you don't, I suggest that somebody does, reaches out to see if maybe there's something that you guys can do to work together to help with maybe the cost for that because I think that that would be a really positive thing. The last time I was here, I mentioned, um, the bottle store at the animal, at Animal Control. They did another one recently. Uh, I don't know if, if any of the money, um, that was um, given for that will be in tonight's finance report. If it's not, I'm still waiting to hear how much we're getting for those bottles and how much, you know, again, I don't have an issue with the church holding on to it. If the shelter likes to continue to do business like that, I have no issue. I just want to know how much money is being, is coming in from the people of the city that are being so generous to donate all these bottles and cans. Constables and cleaning crews on the beaches. We had them growing up. I don't remember, I don't remember the beaches being dirty, ever. I have, my, my in-laws are, are in from Chicago and they went to the beach the other day and she was like, eh, it's so dirty. It's so dirty. I'm like, I'm like, you live on a lake. This is the sound, so it's a little bit different, you know? And then another day I took her on a drive along the whole, the whole coastline and she goes, is that the same beach? And like, this is, you know, from pretty much like Lake Street, you know, down. And they went to where Lake Seabuff was. And I was like, yeah, this is all the same. I was like, it doesn't look so bad, right? I'm like, this is why I love it here, you know, because it's, it's, it's peaceful and it's beautiful and we need to take care of it. And, and having constables, um, handling like the parking situation and ticketing will alleviate a lot off of, um, the stress off of our police officers. You know, having constant cleaning crews during our high season, morning, have a morning shift, a midday shift, and evening shift would only make sense. And when we have events down at the boardwalk, we have, make sure that we have a crew there that night that's going to take away all the garbage that's left by the people because I don't want people to stop coming here. I just want to, I want it to stay clean. And, and I think that we could do that and just having the constables, that would pay, that would pay for itself. And the city has no plan. We have no plan. We have no vision. We have no branding. We want this thing over here. We want that thing over here and they're all great ideas. And someone posted about tchotchkes. Yeah, that's what happens when you have all these different great ideas and you start, you put one thing over here and one thing over here and, and nothing is cohesive. We look like our grandma's shelf with all different little figurines on it. And I don't want that. We could, we could do better. I love it here. I love this city. My heart is a city and it kills me. And it kills me. And please bring Tom McCarthy here. You, actually, I would, I would love to hear all the heads of even commissions too. Bring them in too. You know, get them involved in what's going on. I'm sure that they would love to come here and, and tell you guys and tell people at home watching like what they're doing. You know? I mean, they're there for a reason and we, we need to fix this city from the bottom up. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments, Silvana. Anybody from the public like to speak?
I'd like to say something. Good evening. I live in West Haven. I've been here maybe 10 years. Carmela Quinones is my name. I live right on Beach Street. Condo's next to Chicks. I face the water. I have this amazing blessing in front of me. I moved here specifically. I serve in the Coast Guard. There's the base in New Haven. I take tremendous, tremendous pride in what I do. And so, once I started living here and I saw this beach and I saw, okay, it has to be maintained. This mayor speaks about the pristine. It's such a pristine. Well, it takes a village. It takes the city to maintain the city. I have no control over people's behavior, dumping diapers. I have no control. I want to be part of the solution, not, not, you know, not the problem. I don't. And I don't want to complain. If the city doesn't want to come out and clean up in the, in the beach, I'd go, you know, I'd get a whole bunch of my neighbors, come out, we got to clean. This is, and it's, you know, I called Tom McCarthy one time because we cut the grass. Somebody planted grass many years ago and we go out there, we prune, we cut. That fence is horrible. And they said, you know, we're going to remove it, but you know, people are going to walk over the sand. We'll then replace it. If it bothers you that much and you don't have the money for the fence, then remove it. But you have people that take pride in where they live. You know, there's something about when you get power, it exposes you. You, either for the people or for yourself. And I'm not embarrassed. I took pride in moving here to West Haven, but my goodness, we can't do it alone. We cannot do it alone. I mean, that Beach Street, thank goodness they, you know, new sand and, you know, there were, what do you, those jet skis were all over the place and it took months. I guess the person that was supposed to take care of the, the buoys was away. Something happened. And so they placed the buoys and it's only two buoys where they put the new sand. And it was, for me, it was a blessing in disguise because nobody was on my side over here. And I say my side because that's where everybody was at. So now they have the two lifeguards with only two buoys and the jet skis coming right up into the sand. And, and you know, I can't blame anybody for that. That's behavior that we have no control over people that just don't care. There, there's a rules and they don't follow it. And I get that. But if you're going to brag about our beaches and it's not that I better than anybody because I live in front of the beach, I just happen to, there's a beach in front of my condo. I didn't put it there. I just happen to live there. But my goodness, you know, when I spoke to Mr. McCarthy, I said, listen, just bring me some brown bags. He was nice enough. He brought me some pickers and a bag of, you know, some bags of garbage bags. I said, you know, we can't do garbage bags anymore. We had so many people walk by and say, thank you, but it's not good for the environment. And we had like 15, 20 garbage bags out there. And we don't mind putting our hands to the plow and working and, come on. But we've been waiting for garbage bags, so we're just buying them ourselves. So, again, you want to brag about our beaches and how beautiful it is, whatever happens at Chicks, my home is right there. And I want that be, the beach is not mine. It belongs to the city of West Haven, but I take pride in that beach. I really do. I want to live there. I want to support West Haven. I want to, I pay my taxes. I do everything here in West Haven. I serve in New Haven and there's a flotilla in Milford that I serve. And I don't want to move. And it'll be one less of a family, but my goodness, something is going on. I see the mayor in passing. I see her in stores and I don't want to approach her. She has every right to go grocery shopping and not have anybody, you know, talk to. That's her private time. But, you know, I, I see the, the previous mayor and I'll tell you, whether you like him, don't vote him, whatever the case may be, he had that beach cleaned constantly. He had those guys out there with the machines weed whacking. I mean, you want to brag about it, step up to it and maintain the beaches. If you don't, then give us the supplies and we'll take care of it. Remove that, that fence and make it look beautiful. I mean, make, West Haven, that whole street is a hot mess. But if people come here for the beaches, come on, let's represent. I have pride. I really believe in this city. And if it's time, listen, I give this mayor, you don't want to do anything and this is your last time in, man, walk away with your head held up high. You didn't take the money. You don't know where anything went, whatever the case may be. If this is your last term, walk away with your head up high and say, you know what? I did right by the people. It was a little shady. I can't be responsible for that, but I'm doing, I'm going to do rights. My last term, but I'm going to do what's right for the people. And I'm not embarrassed. I mean, you know, we- West Haven's not the first and we're not the last. There's going to be lots of towns in Connecticut that money's missing and whatever. But, come on, you got people here, you know, most of the people laughed. They didn't agree with the conversation. You know, let, let's be part of the solution and not the problem. If she's here, I mean, show up. Tom McCarthy, pleasant guy. I've met with him. He's brought me some things, but come on, finish it. Finish it. Finish it. I was raised, you commit to a job, you give it your best. Doesn't matter what's around you. You give it your best and you walk away with your head up high. And I hope that's what this administration does. I really do. I applaud you guys for hanging in there. And you know, you signed up for the job. You got voted in. Commit to it. Commit to it and talk to the mayor. And say, you know, because at one point you're either going to be voted in, voted out. Come on. I appreciate everything that you're doing. But you have to be accountable for your behavior and your, and, and your commitment. Just do the best that you can. That's all that we're asking for. Because I don't know who lives and who doesn't live in West Haven. Either way, it doesn't look good. It doesn't feel good. And I know when you guys go to sleep, I don't know how you guys are sleeping or not sleeping, but you have a conscience and you were voted in. And if that means that you have to talk to the mayor, please, please do what's right. And if this is your last term, walk away with your head held up high saying, I did my job well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your service, ma'am. Anyway, would anybody like to, uh, speak? For a second time, would anybody else like to speak? A third and final time, would anybody like to speak? Oh, the speaking's over. I would like to take a five-minute recess, please. We are back in session. I forgot what it said here. So, um, we need the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a discussion?
I have discussion.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Quagliani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, very minor on page one, under councils as a whole. Councilwoman Hosky made a motion to, it says nominated. If we just lose a D on that, um, that'll be good. And also on page five, this is the more substantive one. Uh, communication A fifteen says concerning Mayor's ARPA Community Investment Plan FY twenty twenty-one public. And then there's something missing there.
It, if I, I know what you mean. She forgot to put in the rest of it, which is down below in the resolution. The rest of the, uh,
All right. So if we just mirror the what's in the resolution to finish up that?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
What is Viva Voice?
Any more, uh, changes? All approved?
As amended.
As amended? Any, uh, nose? Any abstain? I abstain. I wasn't there that day. On the thirty-first. That's correct. Yep. Motion pass. Looking for approval of the minutes of this special meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Approval? Any no's? Any abstentions?
You were absent. Can you really make a second on it? Bad you as absent. So do we only have Councilman Boris abstaining right now or, yes?
That's correct. Okay. Motion passes. Now I need to,
I remember wrong one.
Yeah, no, I have to abstain from that one.
And Councilwoman Hamilton, you were here.
On June ninth.
June ninth.
June ninth.
If those, if these are correct, that's what I'm asking. I don't know.
So it says, oh, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilwoman Tucker, and Councilman Boris, according to this, were absent on June ninth.
Then I abstain.
Yeah, I abstain.
So you have three abstentions.
So we have O'Connor.
Those are come here all the time.
Hamilton.
And Boris.
And Boris, both abstaining.
Motion passes. Now I need the approval of, of minutes from the special meeting on July eleventh. Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you, Chairman.
Councilman Johnson?
Uh, need a correction. The bottom of page two, under the motions approved, communication A four. Councilwoman Tucker and Councilman Johnstone, it needs to be changed from abstained to no. No vote. Because the following page says we voted no. That is the only correction. Thank you, Chairman.
All in favor? Any no's? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
We have two abstentions.
And we have, um,
Councilwoman Hosky.
Hosky. Garthway and Boris.
Three. My apologies. Motion passes by majority. Now I would say you pass out the communications.
Yes.
Clerk?
Yes. So we have before is communication A from the tax collector in regards to overpayment refunds for the month of July twenty twenty-two. We have communication B from Maureen Lilis, Director of Health Department, regarding a request for a refund of three hundred dollars to be made to Ben Vincy for a temporary food event permit for two separate events that were canceled due to an unforeseen circumstance, which is being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hosky. And we have before is communication C from Maureen Lilis, the Director of Health Department, regarding a request for a refund of two hundred dollars to be made to Kenneth Sacco of Yankee Clippers for barber shop permit late fees being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hosky. And we have before is communication D from Lee Tierney, Corporation Counselor, regarding a discussion and potential approval of the sale, lease, or transfer of six-ten Campbell Avenue rear for eighteen thousand dollars being assigned to Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. And that concludes the communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stacy. We will reconvene into committee meetings and we'll start off with the Finance Committee meeting, Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, Chairman.
The floor is yours.
Now, ten sixteen, and your committee on finance is in session. Um, those in attendance are Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Sarah Akbarali, Robin Hamilton, and Councilman Robin, Rob, I'm sorry. And myself acting as chair. I'm sorry. I was gonna, huh? It's late and I apologize. Um, we have communication B. I'm just gonna go to the communications first. Communication B from Maureen Lilis. I'd like to bring, um, Director of Health Department regarding a request for a refund of three hundred dollars to be made to Ben, Ben Vincy for the temporary food event permit for two separate events that were canceled due to unforeseen circumstances. I don't know why I read that whole thing. I'd like to bring this out favorably. Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Councilman?
Sorry. Um, do we know what those two events were?
I,
Were they city events?
Yeah. I have it in a email. I'm sorry. Did you read that CC'd on that email? My apologies.
If I was, it's my apologies, but.
No, I mean, it could be, duh, 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 duh. Um, I, yes, um, mince paper carnival that was canceled by the city's PD. The carnival. I apologize. I didn't.
That's one.
He had two permits.
Oh, two permits for that one event.
I don't think it was two, like, separate. I think it was two. I know what it says. Um, do you know Mr. Jackson? No idea. Probably not, yeah, but.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Nope. Great. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Motion carries by majority. Communication C from Maureen Littleis, Lil, Lil, Lilis? I'd like to bring this out favorably. Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Do you want me to have discussion?
I don't know. I'm just checking. Any discussion? I have discussion, but you can go first.
So my comment with this is, is, is the other one I oppose because it's, it's kind of buyer beware. You take your permit out, you take your permit out. I think it's a slippery slope. This particular communication, this is a long-time business owner, um, in the city and had some, some health issues and other issues that made him be late for renewing his permit. So I, um, I have no problem with, with, with approving the request, um, this evening.
I wish you would've told me the reason why you said no to the first one because I, now that you have me thinking, buyer beware, right? Do, we don't have, Lee, did you hear what the councilman said? Do you know if historically cities or municipalities would do something like that? You put out a permit, you take, you run the risk of that event being canceled.
Well, it's, it depends on if, you, you also run a slippery slope if the city puts out events and then it's a city agency or group canceling the event, depending on why you're canceling it. But I think if, uh, you gave people notice in advance, that might make a difference.
Yeah, the PD did cancel that event. You, you know that. I know. But you still feel that way.
Well, it depends on why the PD.
I know, but I just think it's an interesting topic that deserves further discussion, maybe at a later time. So I want to go ahead. Are you sure?
Yeah.
So Lee, Mr. Jackson, make sure you get good notes on this. Only because there's gonna be more to come. Um, I am very interested in Mr. Sacco and his permit late fee. I approve us refunding him because he's a longstanding small business in our community. And during the height of COVID, you know, our small businesses struggled. So I want to approve this, but I want to approve this period. I also want to look into, we have ARPA money that should be helping our small businesses. How many small businesses in this community, be it barber shops, hair salons, restaurants, bars, liquor stores, I don't know. Had to pay for permit fees for the Health Department or possibly late fees. And their businesses were struggling. Like, they were barely keeping their doors open. And we made money off of that. So I, and yeah, we did. In my opinion.
We waived a lot, too.
Well, I wanna know what we waived and what we charged. And then I want the ARPA committee to come back to us with a plan between like March fifteenth of twenty twenty to possibly the end of the year to pay for that, that we use that money, that why are we, why are we, like, we should be doing more for small businesses. And I'm thinking this is what that ARPA money, I would think, would be meant to, to do. That, you know, the bar comes in and says, look, I'm opening my doors again. I closed for eighteen months. I'm opening up. And they were like, oh, well, you gotta get your permit and here's your late fee. So I want.
You're not just focused on the late fee though. You're focused, are you?
I'm focused on all of it. It, I would think that during their crisis, isn't that, I don't know if that's what the ARPA money's for, but I think that's what the ARPA money should be for. That we should be finding ways to help our small businesses, establish small businesses. Maybe, I don't think we should do it for the new businesses that are coming to town, but maybe we should. I don't know. But it's not my, you can't decide that all tonight. But I think this gentleman's play isn't just his play. It's probably the plate of many small businesses in this community that, for whatever reason, when we were thinking about what to do with the thirty million, we didn't think of that. So I'm thinking of it and I want something done.
So you, so.
And I don't wanna wait six months.
So I was going to say, so what you are looking for, if I understand you, Madam Chair, is a plan at your next city council meeting that would provide some form of, it would be a, a tight plan that would allow for some form of permit relief for small business.
Yes.
So it would be defined in both realms.
And I don't know, you know, if there's other.
And paid, and paid by, uh, relief funds.
Correct. So I did reach out to Maureen and I told her kind of what I was thinking earlier, maybe Friday. I don't know. Today might have been too, that I just think that we need to do something. And I don't know, you know, um, Mr. O'Brien, when he was here, he's talking about when he was a small business owner. I mean, I just don't know if right now we should, if there's other ways to help, say, was he a pawn shop? I don't know what he owned. Oh, I'm sorry. A jewelry store. I'm sorry. But you know, like, do they get permits? You know, like, if they needed a permit because they're doing something to upgrade their business, maybe we should look at that. Maybe we should look at, you know, the, the gas station that it needs a permit to do something else. And maybe we should be looking to help our businesses in the city. I don't really know. I don't wanna belabor it tonight. You got a thought?
Nope.
But that's my idea.
Okay.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Anyone else have discussion? Yes.
I did, I see. I like that idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up because it does show that we care about the small businesses that are here. So thank you, Madam Chair.
You do have a thought.
I was thinking you did.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little slow tonight. Um, so Lee, I, we.
Were you all set, Chair, uh, Councilwoman? Were you done? We're sorry. No, please. Are you sure? You are, okay.
So we did approve money for small business and the plan hasn't been defined. So whether we use some of that money or new money, I mean, I don't, we, we, in part, part of our ARPA plan was approving a bucket of money. part of our ARPA plan was approving a bucket of money for small business relief. So, maybe this is an element of that.
Yes, I will incorporate both and have them back to you by your next meeting. Through, well, I won't have it back to you. I will incorporate it. It'll come back to you through the ARPA, through Ken or through someone.
And I just think that we really need to.
That's not my thing.
We, we need to be diligent, though, and, and I know you said that there were other, and, and what, um, you said something that's very interesting to me, so I wanna revisit that. Are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
You said that we waived other permit fees. How did that happen? Because I don't recall that coming before me and I was voting on it.
Well, no, the height of COVID.
The height of COVID.
Yeah, there were instances where, because of interactions and whatnot, that we couldn't actually get into facilities. So, it was a question of, you couldn't, you couldn't renew under the, under the prior plans because you physically, there was no capability to do that. We were not, we had social distancing, whatever. It wasn't until a little later that we were, we were getting people into actual facilities for inspections. So, we were grandfathering or, you know, allowing things to be renewed at a later date, so on and so forth.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't out of benevolence, it was out of inability.
No, no, I thought you said that we waived, meaning that we, like, reimbursed them or didn't, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, in effect, we did. I mean, they didn't, they didn't get charged.
I understand. No, thank you. Anything, did you need me? You were like, right, I thought maybe there was something. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Very well. Um, Communication D has been withdrawn and because the mayor is not in attendance tonight, we will be doing, holding Communication J. Do we know why she's not here? Okay, so maybe just let her know, maybe we can send her a follow-up that until she can be present, I will not be bringing out a five-year plan until she is. I thought we got that the last time. And your Committee on Financi, oh, I'm sorry, your Committee on Financi.
Can we see the, Mr. Jackson's here?
Oh, right. Thank you for letting me do this, yes. I said I was gonna skip that to do this real quick. Mr. Jackson, thank you for being in attendance. I apologize, I was about to close.
Uh, uh, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I will certainly keep it brief, um, uh, and, and at the, uh, the most important current things. Uh, we are currently in what is known as Period Thirteen, um, twelve months and then the thirteenth period to, uh, to complete the transactions from the prior fiscal year. Uh, so, thirty days after the close of the fiscal year, we straighten everything out, draw up all the numbers, make sure that invoices from the last fiscal year come in and are paid appropriately out of the last fiscal year. Um, so that is what we are working on, uh, now. Uh, we have kicked off the new fiscal year. Um, uh, it's gone pretty smoothly. Uh, we've, uh, we've gotten, uh, good action out of Munis. Uh, we do have some things that we have to, we have to do for Munis in order to actually make it more powerful. Um, as you know, as you have seen, uh, we have a high degree of, uh, utilization of vouchers in the city. So, even though those voucher numbers have come down over the last couple of years, they're still higher than I would like to see from an organizational standpoint. But we can't really get, uh, fully off of the vouchers until we are fully trained on, uh, inputting requisitions and purchase orders into the Munis system. And that has to come through Munis training and they are nationally under a lot of pressure for training, so they will not be able to be here until September. Uh, so I'm hopeful that in, uh, perhaps, uh, our October meeting, I'll be able to provide you an updated status as to how we've transitioned from a high use of vouchers to a very limited use of vouchers. Uh, you, you saw that, uh, Moody's has, uh, put us on a watch list. Um, that's a circuit breaker within Moody's if there is a period of time for which you do not have an audit. Uh, it is an automatic placement on a watch list, uh, and they reserve to write, the right, um, to, uh, withdraw a rating. Not downgrade, just not rate it. Um, so, uh, we are working with our, uh, with our financial advisor, um, to see what documents we may be able to provide to forestall that, um, because we will not have an audit for FY twenty-one within thirty days. It is, uh, it is functionally impossible. Uh, the contract that we have with the new auditing firm, uh, calls for delivery of items by November thirtieth, not thirty days from now. Um, so, while they are working hard, uh, they are, uh, they have taken a lot of documents and are remotely, uh, capturing those, um, but the, the timeline simply will not work. So, we're hopeful that we can provide enough information, um, to satisfy them at this point. Uh, and, uh, so that, uh, that covers the audit, uh, that covers, um, uh, the action by Moody's. We still have, uh, uh, other ratings that are out there, um, that have, that do not have this circuit breaker approach that Moody's uses, uh, and if necessary, uh, we can always go to another rated, rating agency like Fitch. There are three primary rating agencies, um, so we will examine our options as we seek to go to the bond market this fall. I'm happy to, uh, oh, well, I guess I didn't, I, I buried the lead a little bit. Um, we are, we are projecting a surplus of approximately one million dollars for FY twenty-one, uh, which, uh, should it hold true, uh, will, uh, bring our fund balance to seven point one million dollars, uh, one of the largest fund balances that the city has seen in quite some time. Happy to answer any questions.
Hi, Mr. Jackson. Um, about how many employees still need training?
Uh.
Or departments?
Yeah, the, the, the cadre of people who are, are actually sort of, uh, the ones who actually put in requisition. So, it's, it's really the, the six-eighty-one clerical staff who need training.
And that has to come from Munis itself?
Yes. Because we haven't been using this, uh, element to its, uh, at least to my satisfaction. Um, it, it's not, uh, it's not sort of commonly known as to how to do it, to do it well and to do it appropriately. Uh, and then the, uh, the requisition approvers as well, and we have to work out the, uh, the workflow because it goes through four steps before it is converted to a purchase order. So, everyone who is engaged in that needs to understand their role and we have to test out the workflow to ensure that it, it works properly.
And, and we have a September date for them to come in to do it?
We do.
And when they do, will it just be like one big session or?
Uh, no, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna break it into manageable work groups.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, that is, uh, being handled out of, uh, out of the purchasing office.
Thank you.
So, if I wanted to, I would like very much, if it's possible, to be included in that training. I think it, it makes sense for us to understand, you know, what goes into the, the day-to-day workings of Munis. So, if, if, if you could get permission for maybe, you know, a council member or council members of the Finance Committee or whatever, that maybe if we wanna sit in on a, on a trading, I'd like, I'd like, I'd really enjoy doing that.
I will, uh, I will make sure that, uh, the Chair is, uh, aware of your request. Or, I'm sorry, that I will, I will pass it on to the Chair.
You, actually, uh, if I can make a recommendation, you have a budget. So, if you, if, if a council member came to the training with your actual budget and some examples of your expenses, that might be useful. So, we could have, um, Diane, uh, and, um, Member of the Council and so, as opposed to just, you can have the overview, too, but I mean, actual, what I, you have to be, well, what you have to be careful about is you're gonna get Munis, it's not just Munis training, it's being allowed to get into Munis. And so, you're gonna be shut off of, like, a number of different functions, but if we can make it useful, then it makes sense because this is a function that you do, I think. So, it, it's whoever, whomever Members of the Council do that, I would ask that you actually train in, you know, your own budget. That would be useful.
Yeah, and Mr. Jackson, so if they, if whoever says there's three or five or whatever, then, you know, the Chair could decide who that is, but, um, I mean, I think it's still useful to know how Munis operates, right? That there's, that there's lockouts, that there's, you know, two, two-person authentication or whatever it may be, right? Just 'cause we hear, you know, we see the reports, the end result, and then we see sometimes the deficiencies, right? And we wonder how this could happen. And so, that's why I think, little, listen, a little more education never hurts. So, my two questions I had for you were, were, so, you've been here how long? Six?
Since March.
Since March. So, prior to March, um, there was a lot of work done by a consultant, a purchasing consultant. Her name was, I think, Will, Wilma.
Mm-hmm.
And she came and she addressed the Council one or, one or two times and put together, um, from my understanding, draft SOPs and to transition us from the vouchers to purchase orders and to potentially have a draft ordinance, um, to change our purchasing ordinance that's, that's current. Um, is, is that still an ongoing basis or are we starting, um, I don't know, are you starting over or?
No, we're, we're not starting.
And I probably should ask Ricky Spire because he's the purchasing agent, but I just, I was just wondering on that and also on the transfers. Um, so, really, we, if we're, if we're gonna abide by the city charter, we should see transfers before, uh, a line item account goes into the negative. If it's over, whatever, the mayor's and your, your signature. So, we've historically, not just this administration, not just the last one, but I remember historically at the end of the year, getting pages and pages of transferers that are really after the fact and we really should only be getting the ones that maybe are in that, that month period. So, I was just hoping that as we start a new fiscal year now, um, that that policy will change and we'll see, uh, transfers regularly on our agenda.
Uh, that is what I am used to. Um, uh, in other places where I've worked, we've started transfers rolling as early as August if situations on the ground demanded such. Uh, that is our intention. Uh, once we, once we are on more solid footing with Munis, one of the first things that happens is we will lock out the ability to go negative on anything but a statutory requirement such as wages. Um, so, wages and overtime, uh, that, for example, another town I worked with, the only two lines that you could possibly run red. Um, and so, otherwise, if you say, "I need to buy something for five thousand," you have four thousand in the account, well, we gotta go to Council and make that transfer. So, I, I think you will see that. Um, I'm glad you brought it up because it certainly seems historically like this, this omnibus transfer that I'm starting to work on now is the way, um, uh, that, that business has been run for at least a little bit of time. I think we can do better. I think we can do better on a rolling basis so everyone understands in more real time where any account is, is going to land. And I think it leads to a better, uh, budget process, um, because your, your, your actuals are really more actual. Uh, so, when you look at it and, and try to compare March numbers of this year versus March numbers of last year, you actually have a, a better understanding and flow as opposed to kinda lumping it all into that omnibus transfer at the end.
And I don't know about my purchasing question, if, uh, if Mrs. Spire can, can answer that question when we could see a.
Yeah, 'cause she was creating a whole point. She said, "Good."
Uh, yeah, the, the purchasing ordinance is something that Wilma worked on, put together. Uh, Scott and David Taylor, who are, is our financial consultant in the Finance Office, and I, Wilma's been out, she's, uh, she, you know, not, not, she's a little under the weather.
So, she's still, she's still on?
They're still paying her.
Uh, no, we're, no, she's a, she's a consultant, so she gets paid for when she works. She's, we're not, you know, I, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, I just, you know, I knew that she's, yeah, she's, she gets, she's a, a paid consultant, so.
Right.
She's been out for a few weeks. Um, but it is something that we are working on, it's a work in progress, uh, it's something that we have to present to the MARB as well, that they're looking for an action item on. Um, and the Munis training is September seventh and eighth. Uh, I can shoot everyone an email, uh, be happy to have you on. It's, it's all, um, non-live information, so it's just a training information, so. Uh, but the reason everyone's getting Munis training, uh, Councilwoman Hamilton, is that, uh, we're moving to a new Munis software package. Um, uh, it's, it's time, we haven't upgraded our package in a long time, so, uh, they're gonna train us on the newest version available to us, which is something that a lot of people don't use. It's the desktop version rather than the, I mean, the dashboard version, rather than the desktop version. So, uh, they're gonna train us on that and, uh, like Mr. Jackson said, we'll be able to move away from the vouchers, so.
Right.
That's the, yeah. But anyone that'd like to be involved in that, be happy to send that on to you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Can I just ask about the consultant?
Yeah, 'cause I want to ask Mr. Jackson's one.
How much money, um, this consultant, how much money have we paid her?
That I don't know.
And, is that account, like, overdrawn yet? I mean, I'm just curious as to when does that all start? Stop.
Uh, we, uh.
How's it funded? Are we using the economic development consultant line item to pay her? 'Cause we have not done nothing with that.
We, we are not, though. We're using the financial services account for that. Uh, the rate, uh, started, uh, at eighty dollars per hour by contract and, uh, moved to one hundred dollars per contract, um, after a one-year period. And so, that's paid depending on, uh, as Mr. Spire said, depending on, i- it's only for when the person works. Now, for, for, I, I know there's a lot of sticker shock around consulting fees, so you say eighty dollars an hour, a hundred dollars an hour, that's a lot of money and it is. Uh, from the consultant side of the equation, um, they have to pay their taxes, they have to pay for their healthcare. So, what they're actually walking away, uh, from, you, you know, in their pockets is significantly less than eighty dollars or a hundred dollars an hour and we do not carry them on our insurance or our workers' comp or any of those other, um, like.
So, I also do know a fair amount about consultants. And, yeah, you do eighty or a hundred dollars an hour, great. You, and you, and you, after a hundred hours, still don't have the product. You brought that person in to create and I kinda feel that's where I'm at. She's been here, with no disrespect, I, I, I'm not, whatever, but I also know that a hundred dollars an hour, way more than what you're probably making as the procurement, procurement director. I'd rather pay him the hundred dollars an hour to get the work done. So, if the project is the project, you need to, at some point, and in my experience, there's this thing where it's kinda like when people say, you see, um, public works drive down a street, pick up four bags, skip these two houses and pick up those four bags, 'cause the gentleman from Washington has come and told us that before, kinda create your own overtime. So, this person, you're like, you, you, you want this handbook on procurement, you want the, what is it? What is just the resolu, the ordinance? How many hours does that take? What, I just, what have we gotten? What have we gotten from the consultant?
So, so, the consultant was brought in before either Mr. Spire or I was here, so.
But guess who's standing here? Because she's not and I'm, I'm kinda over it, so.
I, I understand, I understand the thought process, but, um, the reality on the ground, um, was that we didn't have Mr. Spire. We did not have a purchasing agent. Um, and, uh, I have told him this, I've told this to other purchasing managers, managers that I've, I've worked with in the past. There is no more important person in your government enterprise than a qualified purchasing manager. Um, so, a lot of the time was spent on that sort of day-to-day operations while we were waiting for a qualified purchasing manager, uh, to land. Uh, and then there was a transition period, uh, and the draft, uh, document that we have.
So, we have the draft document in our hands?
Yeah. Um, so, it, it, it needs, it needs a little bit of work, um, a little bit of work, um, but we do have a draft document in our hands and we were able to continue purchasing even though I don't know for how many months we didn't have a purchasing manager.
Well, how, how, I was like, we ever did. That's just my concern, is like, I'm just so tired of paying consultants and not seeing the fruits of that labor. Like, I'm tired of having a fifty thousand dollar consulting for economic development person that never gets utilized, 'cause not a dime of that got spent last year. Like, I'm over it. And I'm so over having to hear the constituents tell us what we already know. It is just tiresome, like, I'm just tired. I'm just tired of the same old, same old. And Mr. Sp, Mrs. Spire, I appreciate all that you do, Mr. Jackson, I appreciate all that you do. You're literally, you're the face. you're the face of it right now. So you're, I, I'm just tired of it. Like, I, I'm, I'm tired of hearing about this consultant but not having the fruits of her labor in front of me. And it's way before your time, it's way before your time. It's a long time. And you're getting eighty to a hundred dollars an hour? I could've drafted it probably. Does anyone else have any questions? Um, you did, I'm sorry, yes.
Um, hi, how are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Um, I'm in customer service in my, in my day job. You know, I sell ice cream, I bake cookies for fun, so everything I do is like instant gratification. So can you explain to me, because I know nothing about numbers, why is it going to take this audit until the, the end of November to get done? Because I, I don't get it.
Uh, because that is the testing process for an audit takes that long. An audit is typically an eight-month engagement. Because they, they come in and literally look at documents. They copy documents, they take documents away, they test it, they look at, uh, all of the grants and make sure that the funds that were, um, were expended, were expended, uh, in a way that, uh, conforms to the grants. It's a very labor-intensive process. Um, so which is why, um, typically, uh, an auditor will hit the ground in November to be ready to have something done, um, essentially, uh, ten months later for the close of fiscal year. It's, uh, I don't know why it takes a long time to build a car because I've never built a car. So I guess, I mean, you know, the answer to the question is that these are, these are industry standards. Um, and they, they really shaved off time because they understood, our unique situation. Uh, when you have an, when you have an auditor who decides to just decline the, decline the engagement after six or seven months of work. They bid on the job with the understanding of what we needed and the best they could do. And this is with us, um, pulling out all the stops. Every time they send an email saying, can you get me these five things? We set aside everything we're doing to get those five things.
That was my next and more important question. Can you assure us that anything they request, they will be given immediately?
Absolutely.
Alright.
Absolutely, it goes.
Everyone heard that, right?
It is, it is the top, it is the top priority. Now, sometimes we have to kinda figure out where it is. But we respond and we say, we're working on it. You got five things, we got three of them that we can send you right now. Got to research the other two, we'll get them to you as soon as we can.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Am I ready?
I had another question, but it's kinda not related to the budget, but maybe it is.
I'll defer.
Oh, I appreciate that. So, this, go ahead, I'm sorry. Mine's not to do with the budget.
So thank you for the org chart. So, cause I was trying to get a handle on it, cause we've been approving budgets and new positions. And I know that you have two or three that you had talked about that are, that are either vacant or in the process, new positions that are being hired. I guess, and you, it's probably a best guess, cause we've, we're all kinda walking down this road that no one's walked down before, right? So, so the MARB is going to hire and bring in a financial manager, right? That was for, so, so they, they gave us some money to kinda bring in con- consultants and, and others, um, to assist, um, with our finances. So is that individual going to be your colleague? Is that individual gonna be your boss? I mean, do we have any idea how that position is gonna function operationally here in the city?
Uh, that, uh, individual will be, and will be, uh, contracted by MARB and will report to MARB. It will be a collaborative endeavor in our office to work with them, um, to help them understand how we do business and for them to, uh, uh, make an assessment as to some of the, the practices. Um, I will continue to work for the city. This individual will work for MARB, but, um, be, uh, be resident here.
And will we know, and this is, again, this isn't passing judgment cause we're, we all, we all have skin in this game for, for a lot of years that have been here, but do we know what this person's scope of work is gonna be? Because we've had a MARB individual in the finance office since twenty seventeen. And I think, listen, I won't speak for anybody else, I was pretty shocked that the things that transpired, transpired with that supposed oversight. And now I recognize that, that individual is maybe project-based and not looking at regular financial controls, but, you know, again, I'm not gonna Monday morning quarterback, but I just wanna make sure that when this individual comes in and we're paying them, that their scope of wer- work is the basics, right? That, um, the financial controls before we start having them work on some project that really, we, we really need the basics taken care of.
Y- yes, you're, I, I think your assessment is spot on. Uh, the last one was more project-based. MARB had created, uh, essentially a matrix of deliverables that they wanted to see. And this person's job was to kinda manage that matrix. Um, I believe that the next person's job is going to be more, uh, more organizational and transactional.
That's good.
I'm good. So now that we're on the MARB, I have a question. There's been a lot of, um, inquiries. The rumor mill is filled with them, that the MARB is freezing our, um, ARPA money, that they're not allowing us to do anything and now we can do all of this. So could you speak or can, um, corporation counsel speak to what MARB? I've listened to the meetings, I've heard some comments made in passing by members of the MARB, in regards to ARPA, just, but nothing specifically that says West Haven, everything's not, we're stopping all of it, you can't move until we go forth and decide.
Uh, in the, uh, the MARB has authority under Connecticut general statutes for a tier-four community to approve any contract over fifty thousand dollars. So we have to bring to them such contracts. They can decline to approve it. Right? Um, but, uh, there is no sort of broad-based, uh, understanding that, that, you know.
That we can't do this, like this idea for small businesses. You know, they're, they can't come in and say, that's a stupid idea, you can't do that. We want you to take this money and do something. They can't tell us what to do with the money. They could just say, uh, we're not gonna approve this fifty thousand dollar or seventy thousand dollar contract.
Right, and they, and.
Like street paving.
They can also make recommendations. Say, well, we see in other communities do this, you might wanna think about it, and we will duly think about it. Um, but, uh, there's, what we, we, uh, we maintain our, our sovereignty in that regard, um, to determine the projects that are valuable to the community. Um, the police, uh, the police contract is an example of that.
Correct.
Um, so, so, you know, they, they certainly kick the tires on it. Um, but it's being paid out of ARPA funds and, uh, it is, uh, progressive.
Yes. I love how you mentioned the police, cause it leads me to my next corporation counsel. Mr. Terman. Um, is there any, thank you, gentlemen, so much. I don't even know how to express adequately my displeasure over the lack of movement with the police pension. And Madam Mayor is not here. My last inquiry was that, so I need somebody to give it to me in layman terms, talk to me like, you know, I don't know what I'm talking about because that's how I feel like people talk to me anyways. Like, they clearly have no respect for my position and what I'm trying to get done. So I asked many months ago, prior to Mr. Jackson, so if you have any commentary or comments, please add in. But I would just want you to know that this, this pension, this police pension is important. And I don't really care how you figure it out. But we're at the point that there should be some deliverables, that there should be some information on it. So I know our old, what was his, Frank, said, oh, I gave them everything, they have everything. The actuary people are, correct me if I'm wrong, the actuary people are working on it. Councilwoman, I promise you. Then we find out, oh, they're asking for more information and I'm so busy, I'm so, so busy. You know, the MARB and this and that and this and that. Okay, so then five months goes by and then I walk into the office and I'm like, did you get it to them? Yep, yep, the actuaries have it. Oh, okay, so what is their, um, um, estimated time of delivery? Oh, well, they don't really have one. Like, wait a minute, we give them stuff to do for us and we don't ask them when they can get it back to us? So now I ask for a follow-up and I'm told that the mayor's busy, people are busy, they're in the finance department, working in the finance department, spending hours in the finance department. What does that have to do with the actuary getting back to us the information that we requested? Cause I am positive. I mean, tell me if I am wrong, like, I've been waiting, it's gotta be a year. It's, it's, is it at least a year? And if I am annoyed, I can only imagine what the police department must think. Cause if we're not gonna do it, then let's just say we're not gonna do it. But I am so fed up with everybody, oh, the MARB is this and we're so busy and now we've had, nobody gives a crap about any of that. What we care is that for once, for once, I, we ask for something and it's delivered, that we ju- like, we get it, right? And decide whether or not we can do it. So I'd really like an update, and I mean like an actual update. I don't care about anybody's job and if they're putting in ninety hours. Let's get a, let's hire a consultant. We got fifty thousand dollars in the economic development line item that we didn't usually lose, you. And so I'm saying all of this to say I'm truly fed up. And I really hope at this day, what's today's date, July twenty-fifth? Twenty twenty-two, that we have an update on where we might be with the actuaries. Go ahead, I'm sorry, who has, who has an update?
I, I, I don't, based on your discussion, I will never have an update that will satisfy you. However, where we are at is, from my side of the coin, which would be the negotiation side, is, um, through, uh, Bertrand Mositz, we did hire a consultant. And we will be ready to present, um, a package to the police once we price it. So we have to price it, see what it's gonna take to pay for it.
When you say we price it, you mean you and the mayor and the finance department or you're talking about the people you hired?
No, the people, people we hired.
The consulting.
The people we hire present you with options and the cost of those options. Then you have to find out, um, how you pay for it. And then when you have a plan, just like we just did with the police contract, when you have a plan that you think there's a way to pay for it, then you can, you can't bring it back to the police before you know you can pay for it. And then, um, you can decide to, um, you know, go forward or not go forward, you know, then it would come to you. And I'm, I am sorry, it, it takes so long. It is frustrating to me a- as well. I don't know why the actuaries take as long as they do, but, um, we, we should be able to have, uh, something for the police to negotiate, maybe, uh, the end of August and it would come back to you guys hopefully by September. I don't think the negotiation period would be that long since it's an idea of providing something that they don't have as opposed to negotiating or taking something away. But again, um, it would have to be, you know, we, we have to figure out how it's being priced and where it's gonna be paid for and are you doing it uh, in this fiscal year or are you waiting till the next fiscal year?
So you understand my fight, so I'm even now more a little bit frustrated in that I sent an email three weeks ago asking for an update and was told, I get, I was given a dissertation about every job duties and where everybody is spending their time. And I responded and I said, well, I.
I didn't give you that update.
Nope, you were on the email. And I responded and I said, well, I appreciate the dissertation on your schedule, but you haven't answered my question. And still ignored. And all we really had to say was, well, we got the information that we needed from the actuaries and we'd be, we're actually, the update is, is that it's back in-house. I, core counsel, finance director, whoever else are now meeting and talking with the union to kinda create our proposal on how we would do it.
Yeah, I don't think.
Nope.
I mean, you don't wanna propose something that the unions absolutely gonna reject or they're not interested.
That's not my point.
But you have to price it. You can't give it to the union until you price it.
My point is, is the update that I've been requesting was that we got the information from the actuaries. The, it is now back in-house and we are working on it. We have to, we have to do what you're now telling us.
Yes.
I could've been told this three weeks ago, instead of waiting for tonight to say, okay. I literally gotta do it at the council meeting because I'm positive that the finance, were you on, on that email I sent? Was the entire council on that email? Okay, told, like, do you understand? All we had to say was it's back in-house. We're working on it, Councilwoman.
Just like I wouldn't necessarily usurp the chairman of your city council in a particular email. I'm not gonna usurp the mayor either. Sometimes I can jump in and sometimes it's not my place to jump in.
No, I can appreciate that. But again, you're, you're the face of it tonight because the seat is empty. And I'm tired of being ignored. Okay, anyone else have any questions? I appreciate that update and I'm excited for the end of August, beginning of September. I'd like an update, cause if it's not gonna happen, I expect to be told. And as, as I'm sure the rest of the council who are interested in the police and getting their pension might be.
Well, you, but be prepared, because once we go into negotiations, you're not gonna be getting an update because it's confidential.
The update is, we're in negotiations, we don't.
But that's the update you're gonna get.
But that's, but with respect, that is all that we need. You are the face of this. I'm, the seat's empty. Did you, anyone else have a, Councilwoman?
Me, I just make a comment. I, I speak for myself, but probably most of the other people on the council. We're just frustrated with the lack of communication. We don't need paragraphs. We only need a sentence or two. You could pick up the phone and give us an answer. Just please talk with us. That's all we're asking from you and the mayor and the finance department. We don't need every single thing that you know about this. We just need, sometimes the question is just a simple yes or no. That's all we're asking for.
I, I understand.
Really?
I work every day. I, uh, took a day off and four hours of my day was working on city business. So I, I do as much as I can every single day. I really do.
And I understand that and I appreciate that you do.
If you don't get communication back, it's because the day ran out, literally, and I have to try to circle back. But be aware, I come back and there are new things that people think are important. I mean, you heard about flags. You are gonna get a flag memo from me. Now, I wouldn't have thought in the, if you asked me a year ago, I would've said, what is a flag memo? The United States Supreme Court has weighed in on a flag, so I had to take time out and I have to do a flag memo. And I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm not making excuses. I'm just explaining the facts. It is really, this has to get done. You know, just like when I said about the election. Um, you know, the judge made a decision and you know what? The judge also said some other things and we gotta do things better. We have to do this better. Um, we have been working on this for a while and it's taken too long and it's too long for the officers. I absolutely agree.
The basic problem is, is that I'm still thinking it's with the actuaries, that we're paying this company to do something and a year later, they haven't gotten what we requested. And that's not, but I can't even be told it's not with the actuaries anymore, it's in-house. Like, that's, that's.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we're in a place to put a package.
No, I appreciate that. Um, anybody else? Who hires the economic development consultant, Lee?
Okay, so occasionally.
Okay, so occasionally, when I've been up here, I've had uh young Hunter here.
Yes, I like him very much.
When he does economic development, we pay him out of the economic development canister. Um, he doesn't, you know, he doesn't use that fund up anywhere near a hundred thousand dollars. Uh Rick supervised an RFP. Um for um people who would engage in a more broader way uh on economic development. So I would hope we have more girth in the economic development area because um. I, if no one else, I could use the assistance.
I appreciate the update. I'm good, is anyone else, I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm, um, the committee on finances closed at eleven oh five.
Thank you, Chair. Next up, redistricting committee, Councilwoman Hamilton.
Lee, are you staying?
You need me to?
I would like for you. Thank you. Uh Mister Chairman, the time is now eleven oh seven, the committee on redistricting is in session. Members present are Councilperson Hosky, App Corrali, Garth White, Bruno. And myself as chair. We have before us um Communication B from June twenty seven twenty twenty-two agenda regarding approval. Of the redistricting map mandated by the tenure census, census. I would like to make a motion to bring this out favorably. Not yet. I, I, I won't let you go, you're in our committee. Well, now it's, right, okay. So I have a, a, the motion and I have a second, right? Is there any discussion?
Yes, so I, I, I'm kind of um nervous about this because a lot of things that have been brought to my attention the past couple of days. Um I was under, I, you said it was G O, I thought it was G O. But the um registrars thought it was South Central Regional Council of Governments. So they're feeling upset because that's who they thought we were using. I never got to, to talk to the people, so I was wondering, could we table this until I get to speak to the company that did the redistricting? Would that be okay with you, cause I, I.
You can look right on here and it tells you, they wouldn't put a fake logo on their map if we didn't go to them.
Didn't actually get to speak with any of them, so it could be tabled that until, I don't wanna make you upset, it's the least thing I wanna do, but could we?
Not upset, a little annoyed, cause we've been doing this since April.
I know, but could, could we just until, wait until the next meeting, just so that I could satisfy myself and talk to them? Just to make sure that, and go back to the registrars and say, hey.
The registrars were invited to every single meeting, we had, and I'm just being respectful to your, your inquiry. Um, they were invited, they were, we had five meetings in April. And they were invited to every one of them. And most of them, they came. No, 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 some, one of them were in the room. I'm just saying, not all of them, not all of them, but Donna was there.
And Sherry.
Uh, Sherry came, right, not all of them, but they were invited. And so to stall this because one person decided that they didn't wanna come. And they made it very clear that they don't have anything to do with this. And now there's a concern, I'm annoyed. I'm annoyed and why would we stop this because one person didn't come? There were five Wednesdays, that's unusual, in the month of April. So I don't have any sympathy and I'm sorry. And it'll, and it'll be up to the rest of my commi- our committee to see how they feel about it, it's a note to me. But of course, I listen to the rest of the members.
I understand the concern and I think that I would be more. Under, I, I hear what you're saying and what your concern is, I think on behalf of the registrar. They had the opportunity to attend, I know the chairwoman spent a lot of time in the registrar's office. And even when she went to go meet with the lawyers with the other company. That invite to attend those meetings was there. And at that time, only one, the assistant registrar chose to go. And I just think this is the eleventh hour that, you know, we're being questioned, I mean, it's July. Where were these questions prior? And I think all of this, that we didn't do this and we didn't do this. It, it, it's very late in the game and I, and I say that, why weren't those phone calls made to you two months ago? You, right, and I mean, and you were in the office and we made every. And I said, I said, where are they, why are you, why, I mean, I said, where are they, why aren't they here, why didn't they come? And, you know, I know Donna came to all of them, Sherry came to, I think, three of them, maybe more. She might have been, uh maybe just that once, maybe last, I mean, she was there. And I just, I just find it disrespectful to, I mean, we put in hours. I mean, hours and did this in an effort to save the cus- the um, the city twenty-five grand and. And for them to come and say, oh, they should have had the machine do it, the machine didn't do it last time. Not you, this is the feedback we got tonight, I'm talking about.
Did, did a machine do it?
Yeah, I thought, we didn't do that.
Oh, you just said that, that's why I got confused.
No, they're saying that we should never have touched it, we should have paid the twenty-five grand to give it to a company to do. This has never been the practice. And we've, we did better this time than they did ten years ago, so that.
Actually twenty because it wasn't updated.
Oh, right, because they couldn't, they, they, you know. So I hear that and if we had done, if we did not truly do all that we could. To bring them into the process, I would say, you know what? Maybe we, we had some faults in this, but I, I don't lay, lay claim to us not doing our due diligence and trying to make them.
We had two attorneys part of this, we have, who's on standby, um Ed Malley is on standby. We had Lee also, we had legal people, just, you know, hold our hand through this whole process. Um, some of the, the comments that were said tonight were insult to my, my committee. It, it was insulting to my committee.
That came from the registrar's office, I find that insulting too.
Right, so. You had time too, Melly, with all respect. You had, you had all information, you have access to me, we met one-on-one, we talked about things. Well, I think it's the, it's the twelfth hour. And I, and I don't know how the rest of my committee feels about this.
You worked very, very, very hard.
We did, we worked very hard.
Lot, lot of hours put in, in, and I agreed, now we're in the twelfth hour and now there's questions, so.
There was back and forth going to um Fairfield. Donna was there, was the first time, but the concerned people weren't.
Would, would you mind me asking, Millie, what, just so I could understand it, what, what is your concern?
Uh, my concern is I didn't actually meet the people that did the redistricting. I just showed up and there was a map done, so I never got to talk to anybody.
We did the map.
Yeah, you, you were there when the map was done. In every change, you were a part of it, cause I made sure you were.
But I, I didn't talk to the people who actually.
You weren't in the room when they did the map.
Well, no, how they calculated where each thing fell, each voter fell. So, I mean, I didn't get to meet them and talk to them, that's my only concern.
That you didn't meet the people at the company.
Right, yeah. Just because there's been some talk about um.
No.
Gerrymandering, so.
But we voted on that.
I, I know that, I get it.
Well, we didn't vote on gerrymandering. Nobody cared about gerrymandering for the last twenty years, now all of a sudden, we have a tight map. And there's a whole thing about gerrymandering, I'm offended, because my district was all over the place on purpose. Okay, we make it a little tighter, now it's, it's a problem. I have a problem, I have a problem with that.
It's okay, you have a problem with that.
Yeah, and you know, guess what, I think a good map is for people to have a problem with it. Right, if everybody, if, you know, just one person's happy, there's a problem. If everybody got a problem, then we did a darn good job. Because you just can't make everybody happy.
I just wish that I, I had gone and talked to them, that's my only regret was this, is that I didn't get to meet them, I didn't get to talk to them. And for me, that feels like uncomfortable that I, I can't make a vote on it tonight if I, if. Now realizing that the registrar is under the impression that you used the same company, that this is what they just told.
Use the same company as what?
As last, the last time.
We did, we used the company that the city uses.
This is what they're telling me that they use, they got this information from.
They're the ones that introduced this company to me, I didn't know anything about it, they're the ones that told me, it is weird, so don't be weird with them.
I, I just, I just, they told, they told me it was Robert Sandella that gave them.
Here we go, that gave them what? You, that gave him what information?
That gave this information about where, where.
He doesn't tell us where we do anything.
I'm just telling you what, what the registrar told me, I'm just telling you what they told me.
Excuse me, ma- and. What does Rob Sandella have to do with our map and why is he making? Something's not right.
Mister Sandell is an employee of the city, so I, I am cautious about how we talk about him. Uh here in this forum without putting him on notice that he was going to be talked about, however, I will say this. That as you know, Ms. Hamilton, I um deferred to the fullest extent possible to your committee. To develop this, so I wouldn't know why people not involved with your, I mean, you might take to information from people or whatever, but. This map is developed basis, on the base of a census tract, it's not developed on the basis of anything else. And NGO doesn't have anything to do with what they have in per se, I mean, they just developed the map. So I don't know why, without specifying any particular individual, I don't know why any particular individual would have had. The input who was not on your committee.
I appreciate that.
If I may though, I probably, uh unfortunately, I probably had to work with, uh well, fortunately or unfortunately, I probably had to work with. The registrars more than any other court counsel, I do find them to be hardworking, uh not overpaid and people of integrity. No, no.
And do anybody, I'm gonna make this, Sarah, do you have any questions?
I agree with you, Robin, this was a collective unit as a committee, we decided on this together. The invites were out to the, the registrar's office. Con- we did our job in communicating with them and if they had questions, they should have asked the first meeting. It doesn't make sense that these questions are coming to us now, it's almost like we're being accused of something and I find offense to that, I really do.
Anything else, anybody else? And to make the night short, does anybody on the council have anything to say, I'm opening it up. To um the whole council, yes?
Yeah, I, I know, obviously it's in the main, I'm not on the committee, but I, I know you guys worked hard, I know everybody on the committee, I know you worked your butts off on it. And, you know, whether people like they got redistrict or move to another, that, that happens every ten years anyways. For the, for the, so, I, I thank you for putting the time in to do this, you, you and your committee. So I do, I thank you personally for that.
Thank you.
I think this, what the registers were saying is, they was just wanted to know, cause I heard the same thing. Was, did you use South Central Regional of Governments, I guess, for the. Okay, that's what they were just asking, I guess, and that's why they, they asked me, I'm like, I'm not in that committee, so I don't know nothing about it. But, right.
I have a phone and it's listed for the whole world to see, it's on the website.
Right, but I guess that that's what they wanted to know, why it wasn't used and that's why.
Because they are the ones that told me about G O. So that's weird to me.
That's the answer, right, that's, you know. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, um, so. Sitting here, gathering all the information and I'm just speaking for myself here. Whoever watches the game film on this, ten years from now, I think this was a learning curve. It is what it is, it's better than what it was. Thank you to your hard work, your hard work, yours, yours and yours. At the end of the day, I think, this is my opinion, we are at that point where we have to move forward. We have more bigger issues on our desk in front of us. Do I think it's better and improvement, yes, it's not gonna be perfect and to your point, ma'am. Chair, we can't make everybody happy. In regards to backtracking on my comment a minute ago about looking at the game film. To whoever's in these seats, to whoever's in the registrar's office, altogether, lesson learned. The communication seems to be a trending factor at City Hall that's lacking. So let's keep our cool, I know some of us are a little antsy right now, but at the end of the day. I believe and I encourage you all to feel the same way, Melly, I feel your frustration, I get it, but. We're, the, the time has run out, we gotta give an answer and that's all I have to say, thank you, ma'am, chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say, yes?
I, I, I'm confused because that company that printed the map had nothing to do with what you did, is that correct?
What do you, when you say nothing to do?
You guys did all the redistricting, you did that as a, as a committee, correct? So you told them how to really make the map, is that correct?
We, we sat down with um Fairfield, they, so let me just start all over. We, we started with um a blank canvas with Fairfield, they were very, the registrar's office. Uh because of the, our registrar's office and introduced me to Matt Wagner. We sat down with them with a blank canvas and he just put ten districts up there. Then we had to shape it into numbers that made sense and we were trying to go for the ten percent.
So you, so you were making each district within ten percent of each district, correct? Okay, we did that? And then we gave the map, so to say, to the map people and said, this is why we want you to put all these colors.
Yep, I sat down with G O, who we contracted with for other maps that we do here. And we put it together.
And you communicated with the registrar's office as you were going through this whole process?
Every single thing, no, cause I didn't need to.
Just when you needed to.
They kinda knew the steps that I was at.
Well, cause they've been through it before, cause they've been in that office for quite a few years. So they've been through the redistricting on the state level and on the city level, cause this is the second time I've been through it. So this was done a better, much better than the first time, cause I've been here for, we did it when I first got on the council. So I, I'm just confused on why somebody would wanna see the company that made that map when they had nothing to do with it. That's just, I'm confused, great job on you and your committee on doing an awesome job on getting that within ten percent. Cause that is a lot of work and I believe Councilwoman Hosky did a lot of that math. By hand, if I was, if I'm correct, I'm not sure, that's what I thought I heard you say to her or to in the group. So again.
And also, Sarah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sarah, I didn't, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I didn't realize that, how much help you did in there, but as a committee as a whole. You did a fantastic job and I fully support that and I, and I'm getting some streets moved off of my district.
Don't just stop there, stop there.
I just wanna make a quick point to what you're saying, Chairman, cause I don't wanna leave with this either, is that. We did get feedback from the lawyer. And making the map, that some of the math that we did, that they determined. That they determined how they could make it even closer, everything we had, I think, was under nine percent, but they were able to. Spread it out even more and I think um they gave, they took some from the fourth to give it to the eighth. So that those numbers aligned even better, so it's not that. We we went with just with what we did, we, there was some negoti- not negotiate, there was some feedback to us to say. You should change this, so there's like a chunk of the eighth that kinda goes by the first and near the third, cause they took it from the fourth. Um to just, cause the fourth had too many and the eighth was still kinda low. So it wasn't just, they just did what we wanted, they looked at it and said, oh, you know, look and make some changes because, you know. You can't just get and and I just wanna say this, when you look at it, you're like, why is it shaped so funny, it's based off census blocks. Because like the first and the fifth, um we have a lot of apartment buildings and you're like, oh, just do this street. Well, that street has four hundred people, you can't just move that to the eighth, so it was really like. Creating stuff in the eighth was a little bit complicated, so, cause it's all based on the census numbers. The census tract, whatever it's called, but I I'm, that's all I wanted to make sure that was out there.
No, I appreciate that too. Um in in my discussion, Lee, may I ask, did um you got the invoice, I sent you the invoice. Have they been paid? Okay, only because we need to go back to them now, um once this is approved and get the maps for each of. Your department and other departments too, and I don't wanna be embarrassed.
No, no, I'll double check, but yes, that went out, it was six hundred dollars, right? Or some proof of payment, yeah.
All right, anything else? Cause I'm losing people here. Okay, thank you. Um I I I personally wanna thank you, Lee, um I thank my committee. I I I thank you for giving up those Wednesdays in April, I thank you for when I wanted to have discussions with each of you. To, for transparency reasons, that you each um took time, no matter where I was. And to talk to me and to um to make this happen, we we are ahead of schedule, I'm proud of us. And I I just really just think we had a good committee and I thank you. Um I thank um Attorney Mally too for um just being with us. Um even when there was bumpy roads, he was there to kinda um smooth those out and make suggestions. Stacy, thank you for running to Fairfield when we needed the hard copy map. And I thank Fairfield, um Matt Wagner for um for um in Fairfield. For just helping us through the preliminary part of it, um. I would like to know, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The Committee on Redistricting is closed and the time is eleven twenty-nine.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Next up is Public Land, Councilman Chairman Donovan.
Time is now eleven twenty-nine, Committee on Public Lands is in session, members present. Councilman Quagliani, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilwoman Hamilton and Councilman Councilman Bruno. We have before us tonight Communication D from Lee Tieran and uh corporate counsel regarding the discussion of. Um potential approval of sale lease and transfer of six ten Campbell Avenue rear. Um we're gonna hold that for a little furthermore discussion. Uh also, we have Communication H from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh agenda from Corporation Counsel Lee Tieran in regard to potential sale lease transfer of. Two oh four Jaffrey Street, we are also holding that with uh till next meeting.
Yeah, so I'll get your feedback on uh the Campbell Ave property, but I'm gonna need feedback from you guys on that.
Committee on uh Public Lands is now closed at eleven thirty-one.
Unfinished business, not so long unfinished business.
Um Lee, I'd like to talk to you. Um we, Sarah and I have been, um well, I have called the attorney that was, is supposed to be used for the investigative committee. Um Attorney Joseph Burns from Rowan McEwen. Um he told me that he was waiting to hear from you and I watched the MARB meeting and they said, or you said that you had not contracted. The attorney firm yet, is that correct?
We didn't engage him uh with a um, you know, a basic fee agreement yet because. Um I had met with some of the counselors, uh waiting to see how defined the scope of services is gonna be. I'm waiting to figure out how defined the scope of services be, I think we'll have an agreement with him this week.
Okay, Lee, this has been going on for a really long time, I I know it's your job to do this and. I I feel like you've been taking a really long time, we keep getting pushed back on, you know, with all these excuses. And I think honestly, I don't know how Sarah feels, cause we didn't talk, but at this point, I think it's like a total farce, this this is a farce for me. And I feel like the MARB has said that it also is not interested, us not interested in having us do this. At this point, so.
I, well, it's certainly the MARB is not interested in the council doing certain investigative study, I would agree with that. They've expressed that. But this council, through your charter, has asked that I provide you with a lawyer, you have a lawyer and so.
Yeah, the thing is, we don't have a lawyer, we don't have an attorney, because he's not contracted.
Well, I I don't know how your organization on your council is going in terms of this attorney, I don't know if each individual person gets to call the attorney.
Phone calls because they weren't hired yet.
But I I I mean, you can do it this. Hold on, you can do it this way, but I wouldn't think that every single council member would be calling the attorney. I would think that it would be organized through one council member calling the attorney. So I'm trying to do a scope of work based on what the council is telling me. Well, Attorney Burns did not say he had a scope of work, so um if you you think you've defined the scope of work to Attorney Burns. Then we should be all set, we should be able to do engagement letters.
It's in our minutes from March, or whenever we approve. Whenever we approve, I'm sorry, I'm out of. Whenever we approve the 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 investigation, we, in that motion was the scope of work, what we wanted them, and then we picked. Two liaisons from the council being Melly and Sarah, so they're the two that should have the 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 conversation with him, not us.
All right, so what is the first thing you instructed him to do?
I didn't instruct him to do anything, because he said I haven't talked to Attorney Tieran yet.
So I guess that that's, all right, so that that seems to be, I don't uh. To the fullest extent possible, I want his duties to be what you envision him doing. So I guess, uh what, if you guys, just send me a brief email of what you think he should do and I'll make sure it's part of the letter and we'll get him started.
At this point, Lee, I think you should just recuse yourself from this.
How do I, how do I hire, how do I hire him?
I don't know, this, cause I I feel like you have been wasting our time, you've been, you've brought in this other uh firm that. Had a conflict of interest, how could you not know that that they didn't have a conflict of interest, this is uh like a very publicized thing that happened to our city.
Person engaged him that day.
I mean, yeah.
If you're happy with the attorney, we can engage him.
Yeah, Sarah, what do you think?
I thought after the meeting, after we approved, that they were, because we were told as liaisons. We were to, you know, it was our job to have the meetings and to communicate. And when we tried doing that, no one's even picking up the phone or even letting us know that they're not even hired yet.
Well, I, eh, all right, the the, I don't know what the miscommunication is. But I don't have a problem with the direction coming from you guys, so I will talk to Attorney Burns, make sure he understands, you you know.
Because they said you hadn't communicated with them, so it was. Eh eh to us, we were like, what's going on here, is there an investigation, is there not an investigation, we need to be transparent to the people.
My conversations with him uh was that, I I didn't realize he was getting direction. So if he, I I assumed direction was coming from you guys, if it's not coming from you guys, then we will. We will remedy that, direction will come from you guys and I'll tell Mr. Burns to follow your direction.
But Lee, if you haven't engaged him, how 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 can we give him directions?
Well, all I need is some direction, so the scope of the work, so I will, I I didn't feel that the motion was. Uh quite what you needed for scope of work, but I will make sure he has an engagement letter so that he can. If that's what's holding it up, I will make sure he has an engagement letter so he can he can work, not a problem.
I I mean, we put our confidence in in these councilwomen here to fill in the blanks, right? If he asks questions about exactly what the scope of work is, that's why they're the liaisons, they'll come back to us like they are under under unfinished business and say. And give us an update as we go along, but we purposely wanted to recue, uh listen, and in my opinion, I wanted to recruit myself and. Anybody else that was on the past council, so it made sense to have two liaisons, so they were selected. And we we by nine votes, I think it was a uh unanimous, we we made a motion to invoke that the that section of the charter that allows the council. To investigate, obviously, we're not gonna do it ourselves, so we, you brought the attorney in, we interviewed the attorney. We made the motion to to contract with, and you actually corrected my motion at the time, right, the the language I used. You know, was, you added some things and that's what the motion was, and then we've kinda been sa- sitting in limbo thinking stuff was happening.
I didn't, he contacted me, he, I, he, maybe I misunderstood him, but he didn't seem to have the direction. You're saying to me that it's not, he didn't have the direction, the fee agreement, that wasn't the conversation I had with him. So as long as you you give him a direction, I don't know that there's a problem, so. And I can incorporate it into the fee agreement, or if you don't want me anywhere near your direction, then I will try to make the fee agreement as broad as I can.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with you not being anywhere near it at this point.
All right, we have to get a fee agreement, though.
Right, so, let's do that.
Be near the fee agreement.
That that's fine with me, Sarah. No offense, Lee, just.
There's just a lot of issues with communication, how are we to do our jobs for the people? If we're not even getting any answers, if we're not getting feedback, if we're not even told simple things like, oh, I'm sorry. We didn't contract with them yet, we have to hear it from a MARB meeting, that's very, very distrusting and. It just angers me because we're the council, we're getting blamed for all of these things. Because there is no communication, my frustration is just, it's beyond.
All right, I I didn't, the understanding I got from Attorney Burns, maybe it was uh. Maybe it, like you say, there was a miscommunication, I will, I have no problem getting a fee agreement completed for him for this week. Um you are right, I mean, the MARB, if they had their druthers, there wouldn't be any investigation, but as I said at that MARB meeting. That the charter clearly allows the council to have an investigator arm and the council is allowed to request and receive. Um counsel to assist you, so that's what you will have. And I think if uh on Thursday you contact Mr. Burns and you have any problem with him, let me know, because you shouldn't. He should be there to assist you and guide you and, you know, whatever direction, well, not whatever, but. Any reasonable direction you give him, I'm sure he'll follow up on it.
I just wish it didn't have to come to this, to get us this upset, for us to get answers, for us to say, I'm gonna do this.
All I can ta- I I thought he was off running with you guys, working, I didn't realize until he contacted. No, that wasn't why he wasn't working, but I will remedy that, I will remedy that.
Uh real quick, because it looks that Mr. Sprior, Mr. Jackson have left us, um do we have an update on the P card system? I think uh Councilwoman Hosky, that would be something to put on the next uh. No, I understand that, it's just, we were told it was in the progress and the public's asking comments of asking questions again about the credit card, so. I know it was in progress, I just didn't know if every department had one yet, that's all, so, thank you, Chairman.
I have one more thing, um do you have an update about the Haven?
Yeah, I sent you an email prior to the meeting. I'm sure they're pulling permits this week, they've done some smoothing out, um you're gonna see more of that where the landscape, did you see the. Higher rock, they're gonna be smoothing out the rock, and so they, uh I will check with um the building department every day. And as soon as I know they have permits, I will circle back to you.
And could you have my request fulfilled, that if any demolition or construction were to happen, that they have to publicly notify the residents? That are in and around the area of the Haven, so that the events that happened last week does not happen with any demolition. Or construction, or doesn't cause any alarm.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't have complete information about exactly what happened, but certainly, uh if we know of a demolition schedule, there's no problem. We could uh put it in the voice and put it in.
That'd be great, thank you.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
I have one more, um I just wanna keep it on our agenda under unfinished business, that um I am still looking for the city engineer. To come to a city council meeting to explain what's going on with phase one of Beach Street. This is maybe my fifth or sixth time asking, and I have emailed him several times.
That's disappointing.
Can I ask Mark that that email also go to the mayor, if you're gonna re-request his present?
I think I did once, but I will do it again.
Why not? Sorry. So, NEPCO, Lee, so when when that contract is. Ready for us, when when do you think that contract will be ready for us? Right, we initially gave you the authority to kinda enter into contractual discussions, when do you think we'll see a draft agreement?
Um could be as early as your next meeting. I could be looking for approval as early as your next meeting. Which is the twenty-second, I believe.
Do you want a cookie?
Is it unfinished?
He can have one that hasn't even been bitten yet.
All set?
Thank you. We are on to committee reports, clerk to read Communication A into the record. First up.
Yep, we have Communication A from the task collective in regards to overpayment refunds for the month of July twenty twenty-two, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Which will be followed with tonight's minutes.
First up, we have Finance Committee.
Um Communication B to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance. To whom was referred the matter of Maureen, matter of Maureen Lillis, Director of Health Department. Regards to a request of refund. Reports that the committee met on the twenty-fifth day of July twenty twenty-second to consider said matter, it was the majority opinion of the committee. That the following motion be presented, resolved, the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the refund request to Ben Vinick. For the temporary food event permit in the amount of three hundred dollars for two separate events.
Councilwoman, Chairman Hosky has brought before us Communication B. As read into the record, resolved. Resolved, the City of West Haven hereby approves the request, refund request to Ben Vinick. For temporary food permit in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Excuse me, Chairman, I real- no, I I'm sorry, I um actually, there's errors on this and I read the wrong communication. So what I just read was Communication C and I didn't realize that until I looked at the other one that says Communication B as well. So if we can give follow-up to.
So if we can give follow-up to our admin and ask for. She didn't just ensure that, you know, so what I.
Should I read? I have B, she read C.
So both of these are titled Communication B, so what I just read was Communication C. And I would just ask that we advise her that it's important that these documents for legal purposes are correct. So what I just read.
So I can read C first, I assume?
Yes.
Was that majority too?
Wait.
Now what's your name? So Councilwoman Hosky has brought before, has read into the city, Communication C.
Nope, it's Communication.
We didn't vote on B yet.
No, she read C first.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Why don't we just start over with B?
Okay.
Do over.
I could be confusing myself, yeah, so they're both C, but then I flipped them and I made a mistake, so Communication B to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance. To whom was referred. The matter from Maureen Lillis, Director of Health Department regarding the request of a refund, reports that the committee met on the twenty-fifth day of July twenty twenty-second to consider said matter, it is the majority opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. The City Council of the City of West Haven approves the refund request to Ben Vinick for the temporary food permit. For two separate events. For three hundred dollars. Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hosky. Brought before the council. Communication B for. Uh, a refund of three hundred dollars. Resolved, the City of the West Haven, the City of West Haven hereby approves refund Ben. To Ben Vinick for temporary food permit in the amount of three hundred dollars for two separate events. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any, all in favor?
I'm.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? The, uh. Motion passes by majority.
Communication C, that's where the error is. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of Maureen Lillis, Director of Health Department regarding. Regards to request of refund, reports that the committee met. The twenty-fifth day of July twenty twenty-two to consider said matter, it is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the refund request. Of two hundred dollars to Kenneth Seiko Yankee Clippers Barbershop for permit late fees.
Councilwoman Hosky has brought before us Communication C as read into the record. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City of, the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the refund request of two hundred dollars to Kenneth Seiko Yankee Clippers Barbershop for late, for permit late fees. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I'm.
Any opposed? Sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I'm.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Communication D has been withdrawn and Communication J is being held. The Finance Committee is over, done, nothing else.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Next up is Redistricting Committee. Councilwoman.
Communication B, Honorable, to the Honorable City Council of West Haven, your committee on redistricting. Whom was referred the matter of the local redistricting map mandated by the ten-year census. Reports that the committee met on the twenty-fifth day of July twenty twenty-two to consider. Said matter. It is the majority opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, the City Council of West Haven hereby approves the local redistricting map mandated by the ten-year census.
Councilwoman Hos, uh, Hamilton has brought before us Communication B. On redistricting is the majority opinion of the committee that the motion, following motion be presented. Resolved, the City Council. Of the City of West Haven hereby approves the local redistricting map mandated by the ten-year census. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Approval? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes uni, uh, majority.
Oh, um, that's all. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Councilwoman Hamilton. Next up is Public Lands, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you Chairman, uh, Communication D is being held, as well as Communication H, they're both being held.
Thank you Councilman Donovan. I guess we're up to the new business? Adoption of ordinances previously presented, there are none. Any, do we have any liaison reports? Seeing none? Now we're in new business. Councilwoman Hosky.
Okay, so. Are we good, so I, um, was hoping, I don't know how we should go about doing this, but I'm hoping that the chairman, maybe in partnership with, um. Our lead, our, um, Corporation Council will send a reminder to the chair people of. Our city committees that remind them that per the charter, they have seven days to get their, uh, meeting minutes. Um, into the, right, um, into the city clerk's office and then brought up and posted onto our website. There are, um, I think, um, resident, uh, Mrs. Weinstein bringing to my attention that there are commit, committee meetings. That are currently being had that do not have, um, that are not following that requirement. So I would like for us to do that. I would also like, um. Oh, I also want to know who authorized, um. The lawyer to fight the FOI request on why, what, the, um, the city credit card. I, I want to know, because we were given those, um. It is the residence tax dollars that are paying for that credit card. Why we would have to go through and the FOI request be sent to a lawyer? Is a waste of money, it is their right to, it should be stapled on the walls of the hallway. The, the, how dare we? We, we go zero days without like doing something that just breaks the public's trust. I'm just. I have a lot, cuz I'm annoyed. And I want to know about the Lake Street, Lake Street bid, I don't know why we don't know that that bid has not gone out yet, but I do know now that that bid has not gone out yet. Um, I don't know why it's taken so long for us to know that the bid hasn't gone out yet, but we know it hasn't, I want to know when it's going out, when, what's the holdup, what is going on? I also want to send a letter to Public Works asking about this gentleman, Thomas, I can't, um, from May Street, has come before us. Seven, eight times to talk about those potholes on Second Avenue, I don't know what's holding it up. I, 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 do you know what's holding it up?
I have written many emails about Second Avenue and Beach Street.
I'm tired of this councilwoman having to write emails, I, I, I. Money needs to be spent, even if it's temporary, we, we had volunteers down at Beach Street. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and they filled holes for five hundred dollars. We, the council needs to, we, we need to take action and we need an answer, it, it needs to be done by the time August twenty-second comes around. I'll be at cheer camp, I won't be here for that meeting, but somebody needs to follow up for me. I want to know why the Economic Development Commission has so many open positions, nobody is that busy, nobody. Somebody needs to fill these diagonal positions when we are starving for economic development, this is ridiculous, like it is, I. And I want to know, I know there's a list, I want to find out if the ARP of money can be used to fund. I want to send a letter to the Economic Development Commission, asking them to create a plan of what they would do with funds and then have them present that to the ARPA. Committee to say, hey, we need six thousand and this is what we could do with it, and if, find out from our, I know it has to come before us too, but then find out from our lawyer. If the money could be used for that, you know what I mean, like we have money that's sitting there that we could be using. Cuz we're def, we haven't brought in a consultant yet, you know, that's just, all the last year, we did absolutely nothing, and we have this committee that is willing to do stuff and we're just. I don't know, and I want to know why did we move the farmer's market down to the beach, I've heard great reviews, I've heard people that think that it's great. But I know that there were some concerns that it's not. You know, and that, you know, the impact, I mean, the, the gentleman that came before us, I don't remember who was talking about it, but. Is that an impact to the local economy, like is that impacting the businesses who, when that farmer market is, farmer market is here, I mean, I think it's only one day a week, so. How much is that and?
I will go and ask them, cuz I've been talking to all the businesses there, so.
Yeah, like, you know, why, and we need to know why did they move it, and, and I think West Fest got moved to the beach because you and H wanted to do that, that wasn't really us, but maybe we can ask that too. Um, oh, and two more things, sorry, I want to know why we're still paying a dag on security guard when we walk, i- is there a threat? Like is there some, what is he doing? And I'm not saying he's not doing anything, but I don't care if the board of ed is paying eighty percent of it, that is my tax dollars, that's his tax dollars, that's his tax dollar. Why, what is he doing, he's sitting there to do what? I, I, I don't care how much it costs, it's ridiculous, it needs to stop, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, it needs to stop, he needs to go away, they should buy some crayons, some more books, a Chromebook. Hire some teachers with what we're paying the security guard, I'm over it, I'm over it. I'm animated. I might, I'm sorry. And I'm, when are we gonna find out what the balance is for the animal shelter with the cans, we were asked.
I'll let you go.
So I was, I addressed that with the church, and I was told that it has to go through the deputy, the, the, somebody from the police department.
Correct.
To release that information.
So that's, I know that, so can we send an email, or a quest?
I asked, I asked.
And you know?
I haven't got the answer yet, I have asked.
How long has it been?
A week, any week.
Oh, that's ridiculous.
Any week.
That's all I got. So if she, by the time August twenty-second comes around, if she doesn't have her answer, can we send a letter, cuz I.
Can I just ask a quick question, so if you all are gonna send out emails to people?
Can you copy me in on them, so I know the follow-up would be helpful to?
Mine was just verbal, but, okay.
Okay. Just in the future.
Mine was verbal over the phone with the sergeant.
Oh, okay, then that's fine.
But I just think that we as the city council need to get in the game, like these potholes on Second Avenue, this man, I, I can't, I can't, otherwise, we're gonna need to get a truck.
Just quickly, I want to make a comment.
Mellie's next.
Oh, I'm sorry Mellie, go ahead, I apologize.
Councilwoman Garth, excuse me.
I would just like to make a motion that, um, the city council subpoena the last five years of the, uh, City of West Haven's credit card statements.
We have, I don't mean to, what, we got all of that in email, they sent the. Five years out?
Five years.
So is that not what we got in our emails?
I didn't, I didn't get that. Did we get that? Did anybody get that?
No, I didn't get anything.
I didn't get that. I didn't get that.
I don't think I asked for five years to.
I'd like to have that.
The credit card statements? I think I don't know how many months I have. I had a request, yeah. There's three emails with. I have some. I thought I sent them out, did I just look at them myself?
Do you have five years worth?
I don't think I have five years worth, I don't remember what my request is.
Can we?
Yeah.
So, I have a motion.
Six months.
So, we have Mellie had a motion.
You don't have to vote on that, you can just put it in the vestig.
Councilman Boris had a.
That's not a vote.
Well, she just made a motion and somebody seconded it, so we have to do something with it.
I call the vote.
So.
Some discussion?
Discussion.
Well, I think we need to establish our rules, right, Councilwoman Hosky fired off. Eight or nine things that we, we, our typical procedure is to send a letter and maybe you put a due date to get the information back, so this is a change from what we're used to doing, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying it's a change, so if we're gonna change the way we do business, we need to be consistent with that, so. I would say send the letter and have a due date, if you don't get the, if you don't get that information, then the next step probably would be to put it in a motion, but, I mean, it's, it's. Definitely the council was prerogative to make, make the motion, but I just, I, it's, to me, it's inconsistent.
So if we do that, then he would have to take back his second. She would take back hers and we'll send the letter. Huh?
I don't want to take mine back.
You want to make a motion, but we never, as a councilwoman, quite honestly, we never did it that way before.
This way we can just get our answer without fighting with them anymore. I just don't want to fight with these people any longer.
So, I'll just, just to stick with Robert's rules, so she made a motion, he seconded it, she called for a vote, so.
So then we'll, call the vote, call the vote.
Well, you, like a vocal vote, right?
So, yeah.
Right? Okay, uh, Councilman Gary Donovan? Do you want the motion, uh, reread back, or?
No, I know, I know what the motion is, but. I, I still need a matter to.
So do you want to pass?
So I'm gonna pass right now.
Uh, Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ron Quaglioni? Councilwoman Bridget Hosky?
No.
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwait?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acrobali?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilman Victor Boris?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
No.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Mitchell Gallagnano?
No.
And then we're back to, uh, Councilman Donovan. So we have seven, yes, and. Four, no?
Motion passes.
Motion passes by a majority.
I have just one more thing. This one's longer, so I have to read it. I'd like to make a motion that the City of West Haven through the Office of the Mayor Ross, Mayor Rossi. Or the Director of Finance, or the City Attorney, send out formal demands that the following city employees, past and present. Return any COVID relief funds that were given as bonuses. The following people are these people, Luis Esposito?
I don't think you can say names.
Oh, I can't.
No.
Alright, so can I just put the funds that were? How should I say that?
Because I don't, I mean. Are we, are we, we haven't had to have this discussion yet, I'm sorry.
So she's in the middle of a motion, so she has to finish it. She has to finish whatever she's saying and then.
Well, am I not allowed to say names?
No.
I don't know, I don't know that.
Okay. So, I will say, I will just in general say that any employee that was named in the Cohen Resnick audit should be given, should. Audit should be given, should give back the money that they have been given as a bonus. Or any other city employee that has received a bonus inappropriately from these funds.
So we have a motion on the floor. To give back bonus COVID funds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have discussion. So. So I have a lot of concern with that particular motion, and here's why. We did receive an audit report several months ago, outlining, um, potential issues. Regarding all sorts of things, one, one of them being comp time potentially given inappropriately or given because there was. Not appropriate documentation. So then this council decided that it wouldn't be proper just to take that report and put it on the shelf. Right, and that we should do something, because nobody else was doing anything, nobody wanted to investigate it. There were calls made, no en- outside entity wanted to investigate it, so the council said, we really need to, to look into this. And, and see if in fact, these things did take place and they were, um, they are found to be inappropriate, then we would take. Action. So, we made the motion, just like we discussed earlier, that we were gonna hire an attorney. They were gonna investigate the, the incidents that were, um, presented in the audit report. And then provide us through our liaisons with, um, updates to determine. What in fact is appropriate, what in fact is not. So now to jump now, to say you're all guilty. And you, you give the money back without an investigation being, without due process, that seems to be the theme, right? So people are entitled to due process. So listen, I read that report and I was angry, just like probably, you know, most everybody here was angry, and if in fact, things occurred that were inappropriate. Then action should be taken by this council, and that's the, the, the reason why I voted for the investigation. Cause we can't just let it lie there and take no action, if things were done improperly, then we need to take action on that. But we need to let the process be the process, I mean, how do you, how do you ta- how do you say in one breath, we wanna investiga- I'm still talking? How do you stay in one breath that, that we're gonna investigate this? And then in the next breath, say you're, you're guilty, pay the money back? So, you know, maybe it's my line of work, right, you, you know, that, that people are entitled to due process? And, and so, I just find the motion just. Just troubling, right? I just find it troubling because I think we need to find out what exactly hap- y- y- you investigate, determine the finding and take action. You don't take action and investigate. So I just, I'm just. I'm a big old no on that one. That's why I have to thank you.
And I'll be a no also for a lot of the things that the, um, councilman just said. In addition to that, we've all heard information that that audit didn't have all the names. There were other names of people who received comp time reimbursement. But weren't listed. So how do we, that's what the investigation is supposed to determine. Who, who, in the entirety, who all, who definitely, I mean. I, that there are members of the union, not just, you know, um, appointed people. That, you know, there may be members in the union who got that comp time, that per their contract, they get comp time and they were paid out. That audit didn't list them, so that's why I, I, I agree that what's the struggle? Like if it was not supposed to happen, it, there needs to be an investigation. And if we're gonna ask, then that list needs to be the ask of everybody, like we can't pick and choose, that's. That's not how, e- e- either everyone's guilty upfront, or everybody's innocent until, you know. So I agree, I would be a no until such time that the investigation is over. Yes, thank you so much, Chairman.
I think that what she's trying to say is, they both tried to do the investigation, right, they hired, they thought the lawyer was hired. And the city did them wrong because the city didn't hire them, they didn't tell them nothing, right? So if you're saying they deserve due process, why didn't they get due process, right? They tried, they was led to believe that they were a process going on, and it didn't happen. Is that fair to them to say, well, now I can't make that motion, I mean. Why wasn't that lawyer hired? I'm just saying, but, th- that's the part of the investigation that the council does, right? That's why we hired, we wanted the lawyers to do the investigation, to find out what's going on with all this money and all this stuff. It didn't happen, so I mean, like. I think in a way you're saying, I understand what you're saying, you're saying they should, after, so, let me, let me make clear. My motion would be a little different, so I wanna, I'm thinking, if they are found, that that money wasn't supposed to be with, to them. Do you agree that they should give the money back?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to say. But I'm just saying, but we, she, I mean, the investigation didn't get to happen.
One person at a time, please.
I hope, alright. Yeah, so I'm gonna take my motion back on, on. My second back on what Ronnie said.
We didn't get there yet. Hold on, any more discussion? You taking your second back?
Okay, yeah.
You'll take your first back? You don't have to, you just probably won't get a second.
Are we still on discussion? So, I just, can you, could you just explain to me what your thought processes behind that motion?
I am just, I am sick and tired of trying to get answers and I don't get answers. I get ignored, um, people do not respond, same thing with what's going on with Sarah. Um, and this, I honestly believe in my heart that this whole thing is a farce. I really do, I mean, it's taken us four months to get here. And we, and I know it's Attorney Tierney's, uh, job, he's, he works for the mayor, so he's just. And plain old English, he's just stolen, he's buying time, he's running out the clock, so it's, it's his job. He's there for the mayor, he's not here for us, he really isn't.
So I could, so I appreciate that, that level of frustration, but my, my concern is, is you may have somebody in that report. Right, that has nothing to do with the logistics of us launching an investigation, then now we're gonna, you know, we're gonna say, listen. Pay the money back, we're gonna forego the investigation because we don't think it's got, got any merit. Maybe, and, and listen, this is off the top of my head, and the, the, the last thing I hate to do is spend more money. But the only people that seem to be underserved in all this, right? The, the city has a boatload of consultants and attorneys, right? The Marv's got a boatload of consultants and attorneys, and then there's the lay part-time evening government here. Who doesn't rather have any resources, but are expected to know everything all the time, right? And try the best that we can, so maybe the discussion needs to be, should we have the city council? Have our own attorney that we can rely on to, to, to navigate through. And I hate, I hate, listen, I, I almost even hate to offer that considering where we are, but listen, i- it seems to me that that's. We, we need to be represented, and we're, 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 you know, I could hear the level of frustration that we all have. Right, and we come here every single meeting, and we listen to the residents, and we do listen to the residents, and I say to myself. This is a simple fix, it should never even come to us, this is a simple fix, and this, and, and this is, they're coming one time, two times, three times, four times. For things that really, a simple phone call or a simple service call would take care of. When we ask for information, you ask four or five times, you, everybody's asked here for information. And, and, you know, sometimes we get it, sometimes we have to, we, we, we don't get it, it's, it's inconsistent. So, I do agree that, that it's frustrating, but I think we need to take some more ownership of what we're doing here. And you're doing that, others are doing that, but I think we need some advice that we know, and I'm not, listen, I'm not insinuating that, that the corp council skews. Towards the executive branch, but listen, we, we, if, if we feel that we need a different level of service. Then I think we should consider that, and that's a discussion item maybe for, for next time, so. I understand where you're coming from, and I, and, and I, I appreciate that. You know, I just wanna make sure that we don't forego the process, just, just because we're meet, we're meeting roadbo- how do we get over those roadblocks? Roadblocks, um, while we continue to make sure, at least I know that the process is being, you know, is being taken care of, so that's kinda where I'm at.
I get it.
Can I speak? And, and, yes, I'm sorry, and, and I, and I appreciate it too, and, and it's kinda frustrating, right? Like, you know, you brought a motion to do the five years of statements, and I'm like, no, and my, my no is because. We should ask for it and get it. You, and, and, so I thought, you know, we're gonna go no and send a letter, but now, you know, he, chair, um. Councilman was joking, like, well, you gotta do a motion for all of the things that I listed, and I'm just thinking to myself. No, like that is just not how it's supposed to go. And it's just frustrating, and. It's frustrating, because I don't know when the last time we saw her at a meeting, I mean, I didn't even know she wasn't gonna be here. But I am not, I mean, I'm gonna say this for the record, I am not gonna vote on anything important, no five-year plan, nothing. Unless she is in the building, sitting here, doing the work, and I know she's not a, um, member of the council, but she's. What do you call it?
Ex officia.
Thank you, and she should be here, and I don't know when the last time, maybe she was here when I wasn't here the last time. Oh, okay, so, um. I feel your frustration, you know, cause you felt mine and I. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I too understand your frustration, think we all share it. I'm not even sure if you made the motion, got a second, that it would do anything more than it should've did for us just demanding it. And I think we just have to be forceful and keep demanding what we want. Oh, you are, girl, you are.
And it's not working.
It's okay, cause all of us are in this together, it's on the record. It's not us, we're asking the right questions, we're asking for the right information. I think we have to just keep on, we can't, that's where we can't get tired. And that's all I wanna say.
Even though it's tiring?
Anybody else? Councilman Bruno, I didn't even know you were here.
Me neither, no, you knew I was here, I was listening earlier. Real quick about the, uh, security guards, um, I wanna touch base tonight for a second. So, there were many problems within this building where people were coming to the city hall, and they weren't here for official business. And it was a problem, they were able to enter every office. Um, nobody was having them sign in, nobody was having them, we can't afford to put a policeman there, so I'm just. I personally think that security guards are still in need, only because of what we're faced with today. Uh, and it's, it's concerning, and, and there were problems where they just entered the building, certain individuals, they were not here for business. They went into offices they were not permitted to go into, and it was a problem, and that's what brought the security guards on, and I just wanted to comment on that.
And, and I, and I, and, and I, my only comment to that is, um. Is the board of ed budget, that is our children's, the money that is funded for our children. And if grown adults need security guards, then somebody in the finance department needs to find that money. Because our schools, our teachers, our parents, our nurses are all on, you know. You gotta be kidding me. Call the police department, they're right there, if something's going, call the police and have them come. S- stop it, and if you need security, and I hear what you're saying, but if they need security, then they need to find it in the budget. Stop pay, the board of ed shouldn't have to pay for it, in my opinion.
Can we bring to the council about doing, finding a way we can get mats?
For like the handicaps, that they sell these handicap mats, like one of, uh, one of my coworkers was talking about. That they put on the beach, so the handicapped, people that are handicapped that actually go towards the water. That they, she was telling me that they do it on the beaches, so I don't know if that's something we could talk about, and then second thing real quick is. Um, based on what was going on on Lake Avenue, if we can ask Mr. McCarthy, uh, to be here the next meeting. To answer these questions that we have, if that's possible, please, thank you, I'm done.
I thought Park and Rec was doing that, they were, then.
They talked about it.
Yeah, I think that that's part of what they're doing with their money, who's the Park and Rec liaison? I think when he came, ask him, I think that's something they were talking.
I saw that, uh, I was, I was on my feed, my personal feed with the chair, and that came in, so I started looking into it. I haven't presented it to, uh, anybody yet, because I'm looking to get. I'd like to get grant money, um, possibly from Dorinda, if she's out, you know, there, but. They're not, they're expensive, but not that expensive, you know? Um, depending on how many feet you wanna put it out, so if you wanna go out, say two hundred and fifty feet, it probably costs you about eight thousand in mat. Which isn't bad, but then, we're not just gonna leave the mat there, because the beach coma will just eat it up, right? So you wanna put some kind of railings alongside, so it's just something that I started looking into, I didn't, uh. I didn't get into it, because I believe that's Melly's district anyways, I think, so I would've talked to her. No, I know, but you know, I, I don't like going into, uh. I don't like going into, I don't like to walk into your yards, you know, without knowing, so.
Can I reply to that? It's, it's a hundred and fifty feet, and it's about six, sixty-six hundred dollars, that's what I measured and, uh, and I priced it out.
They're fifty-foot increments. They're five feet wide by fifty-foot increments, and depending on how far you go up. And if you wanna put wings so they can, wheelchair, and I think it's a great idea. Just a matter of when we can get the money and where we can get the money, or hopefully we can get a grant. Um, so I sometimes like to get the information before I present it out there, instead of saying, hey, let's do this. Without doing so, uh, I was, started looking into that, so. I'm all set.
One more.
One more thing, and it's not that, it counts. I, I'd like to be the liaison to the Economic Development Committee, I know the lady, she's, who came, I can't remember her name. She's in my, yeah, she's in my district. Yeah, I, I had a, a couple of conversations with her, and I'd really like to be able to work with that committee.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just in the minutes, I am, she requested it.
Any more new business?
Motion.